Oh, we need to save one of the jets. I don't know about that. So.
Sorry.
Is that pipe is good?
I can get.
Thank you.
Right, she said fifteen seconds, I'm gonna go off my phone. Good evening, we'd like to welcome everybody to the Holbrook City Council meeting for February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five at six P M. Everybody is in attendance this, tonight. We'd like to go ahead and start off with an introduction of a new employee, we'll turn it over to Ms. Jakubowski-Waltz.
Okay, Frank, if you wanna come up, this is Frank Menarick, he's our new streets supervisor.
You wanna just tell us a little bit about yourself?
Yeah, um, my name's Frank Menarick, I'm a thirteen-year resident of Holbrook. So I'm really looking forward to being able to, uh, help take care of the streets that have been seriously neglected over the last many years. Previously employed in Snowflake with Willis Drilling for eighteen years, and then twenty years in the Marine Corps prior to that, so this is my third, third employer in thirty-eight years, hopefully my last. So, looking forward to do what I can for the city and hopefully get things turned around for you.
Awesome, well, welcome aboard, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. We'll go ahead and move on to item number five, consent agenda for the February twel- twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes.
I have the pledge of allegiance.
Oh, well, there's that. Sorry, Kip, Kip, you're too. If you don't mind, we will have a pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman Tefoya and our invocation by Kip Myers with the Bread of Life Commission, if you could stand to the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our gracious Father God, we thank you tonight that we can gather together here with you in our presence. And Father, that, uh, our nation's motto is that we trust in you, and Father, we do ask that that might be a reality, that in fact, we do trust in you. And so, Father, we ask for your presence, for your wisdom, guidance to our council, that it might truly be a benefit to our entire population here. We give you praise for all that you do for us, and thank you, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. All right. Thank you guys for that. We'll move now to the consent agenda for the February twelfth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting minutes, we had a chance to look it over. Anybody have any questions, concerns, edits? Hearing none, we'll open the floor for a motion.
I move that we accept the, uh, agenda from February twelfth, the regular meeting minutes. Did that right?
All right, we have a motion.
Second.
I think Vice Mayor Nelson beat him by a second. All right, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number six, call to the public for non-agenda items.
There are none.
Item number seven, call to the public for agenda items.
There are also none.
All right, we are gonna mix up the agenda a little bit, because I know time is, uh, you're on a timeline tonight. So we're gonna go ahead and jump down to number eleven for the submission of written petition for items not on the agenda, I believe we have one.
Yes, we do.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. So, we haven't had too many of these, if ever, right? The submission for, um, just for, um, the audience and the citizens. So basically, it says, um, "Any citizen of the city may appear before the council at any regular meeting and present a written petition. Such petitions shall be considered and response given within thirty-one days in conformity with the requirements of the charter, the open meeting law, and the other statutory and constitutional provisions for Holbrook City Charter, Article Two, Section two point one eight." And with that, we'd like to invite the Carbonos to the podium. And it didn't say on here a timeline, is it?
I think it's five minutes, but it doesn't specifically say.
We'll give you five. Thank you.
All right, good evening, mayor and council members, my name is Madam Carbono. This is Jack in Brooks Carbono, and we appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today. We're here to propose an amendment to our city ordinance to allow for educational agricultural projects involving swine, similar to the town of Taylor's regulations. I have a copy of that here, if anyone is interested in seeing that. Currently, Holbrook does not permit swine within city limits. However, we are requesting an exemption for youth involved in organizations such as four H and FFA. This amendment would support students who wish to participate in these valuable programs which teach responsibility, work ethic, and agricultural skills. The proposed amendment is, any agricultural or livestock activity conducted primarily for educational purpose purposes, such as four H or FFA should be permitted. Under this provision, animals used in these projects should not count toward the standard animal unit limits and may include swine. Participants must maintain active membership in four H or FFA and provide verification upon request. Um, the swine on our property, should it be allowed, would be housed in an enclosed structure on concrete with shavings, and the bedding would be changed regularly to control odor and flies. Based on feedback from those experienced with swine, raising swine, um, also in the four H program, most odor issues arise from improper waste management, particularly when excrement mixes with mud. Our plan includes proper disposable disposal methods to mitigate any concerns. These projects are seasonal, with swine only present from May to early September aligning with the county fair schedule. Four H is an excellent program that benefits our youth and strengthens our community. By allowing this amendment, we can provide local students with the same opportunities available in neighboring towns. I urge the council to consider this proposal in support of Holbrook's youth and agricultural education. Thank you for your time.
Did either of those boys wanna talk, or are they good?
Wanna talk?
Do you wanna say anything about it?
About what?
You don't have to. Perfect, thank you. All right, thank you, Carbonos.
Thank you.
So, we will, um, we will consider that, and she'll get the policy of Taylor's.
Yeah, this is directly from the City of Taylor's code. Um, it's under their zoning and regulation.
We have a copy of it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And we'll make sure we get back to you within thirty-one days, so, thank you very much for coming. All right, we'll jump back up to item number eight, old business, discussion and possible action. So, we'll go to A, the logo review with the tagline. So if you look through your, um, well, we'll read the background discussion, it says, "The City of Holbrook has undertaken the initiative to adopt a new city logo that reflects its vision for the future. The current logo has served the city well, but does not fully encapsulate Holbrook's evolving identity, growth, and aspirations. New logo will provide a refreshed and modernized image for the city, enhancing branding efforts, tourism appeal, and community pride. Several logo options have been developed and are being presented to the city council for selection. The goal is to choose a design that is timeless, representative of Holbrook's heritage and future, and can be effectively used across various media and city assets." Um, because, so we've already paid Mojo Marketing nine thousand four hundred sixty-two dollars, they've helped us with the logo, and then also helping us with a strategic marketing plan. Um, so tonight, I know the last time we had a special work session on this with these, um, a couple of these logos were proposed, we did have two city council members, they were either via phone for a time or wasn't able to attend. Um, there were some concerns after that first one that didn't represent everything specifically our Old West history, um, or Route sixty-six. And so, uh, Mojo went back and their recommendation was saying, hey, you know, to incorporate all, it's hard to incorporate all everything Holbrook is, right? So they suggested potentially some taglines. So if you look to page of the actual logos, one, two, three, four, you can see where they've added some taglines, so they took the most popular logo at the time, um, with the Arizona, the state of Arizona kind of cut out, and it has on the top the tags, Route sixty-six, Painted Desert, Petrified Forests. That was their recommendation to try to, um, encapsulate more of all the different identities of Holbrook. So, tonight, what I'd like to do is I would like to take one of these to a vote to see where we're at on it. We know we're not gonna get a hundred percent, but it's important for us to make a decision soon enough that we can update our websites, move forward with our marketing plan, and, and move on. Um, if not, if we do take it back to Mojo Marketing, there will be expenses every time there's, did they say how much, Sharon, each revision would cost us?
I don't recall if that being in there, but they're after, we're at our limit now, so then it would be more.
So anything moving forward, we're gonna have to start paying for a little here and there, so just keep that in mind. That doesn't mean we have to settle, nobody's asking anybody to settle on anything, but I think we can get close. So, um, with that, I would just like to open the floor for any feedback on the tagline, specifically addition to this.
So this whole thing right here would be our logo?
So the thing is with logos, you use them in different, um, mediums, right? You can put them on a t-shirt, you can put them on a hat, if you put it on a business card. So my take on this would be like, hey, our logo, our, like, maybe our letterhead probably wouldn't have maybe the tagline on it, we could or couldn't, just decide what we wanted, our official one. But a lot of them sometimes, if you saw, like, they put Holbrook in, like, if you turned to the second page, like, Holbrook's actually in the logo itself. So if you just wanted just that small logo, Holbrook is actually in it, if you look at the second page at the bottom, where everything is encapsulated in one, Holbrook Arizona, it's all there. So, it depends on, are we putting on a business card, that might be more appropriate for a business card, a t-shirt? I would put, or the hat, I would put the tagline on hats and, and merchandise, I guess. And I would add something about why it was, I, I don't think we need Painted Desert and Petrified Forests. I would probably eliminate one of those and substitute it for a different identity, potentially, that's just an idea.
You said you don't like the Petrified Forest?
Both of them.
Oh, both of them.
It says Painted Desert, Petrified Forest, so we could just put Petrified Forest.
The easier it gets, the harder it is to identify with you, right? All of these are better than what we have, every single one of these is better. You know, like, this one has the Painted Desert, Arizona, and the sunset, which we identified at first. This one has the Painted Desert, that.
There, you might have to identify something which one you're talking about, so you're talking around one has a Painted Desert.
So, they're, they're all good, they're all good in their own way, but you want it simple enough that it's absolutely identifiable if we're at the, at a conference, and that was on our flag, people are going, oh, yeah, it's Holbrook.
I would definitely have to go with the, um, what the WIG wants them.
I like that one, and, like I said, where this, the little sun is right above the teepee, that is where Holbrook's located on the map, right? So that was kind of a little nod, yes.
And also, I was thinking about the, it's not necessarily the WIG one, but our Native American Heritage, that we have two of our main roads are Hopi and Navajo.
That's true.
And that is.
So the one with the Arizona you're talking about?
Um, I like the Arizona one.
Yeah.
This one right here.
Which, which concept is that?
And so this.
The one that has the tagline on it.
One, three.
One, three.
This also shows, you know, the Petrified Forest and the Painted Desert at least, I mean, that, the colors. Where are you showing the Petrified Forest? Well.
It's not literal, and that's what marketers do, they take the, the filling of the petrified wood and the sunsets and.
Right, so that, that's pretty representative. And then if, if Route sixty-six is what we want to indicate, then that one sure goes back to our Route sixty-six days. Are you on the one point three tagline, is that the one, which one?
Oh, yeah.
One point two.
One point two?
I think they're, they're all good. I'm not saying Route sixty-six.
They do like the one point three.
It's because of the shape of it, right?
Or they don't like the one point two.
He does, well, he said if you wanted the Route sixty-six fill, then that one.
That one.
See, to me, I feel like it's, I feel like it's, um, you're gonna associate it more with, like, law enforcement.
Okay, because of the badge, you wouldn't think of it as the sign. And, and is that really our identity, is Route sixty-six, is how much of our identity is Route sixty-six?
And you two weren't here at the last one, where some people like the, this shape of the Arizona, because there are other Arizonas, there's, uh, or Holbrook. There's Holbrook, New York, Holbrook, Massachusetts, so this one's like, oh, Holbrook.
I like that.
I like the one point three.
One point three? I do too. And the taglines, we can always add, I mean, that's, we don't need to decide on that tonight either, you know, I mean, that's what it comes down to merchandise.
Oh, wait, is the brown on the bottom? It's a difference.
No, this one. Tamara, would you like this? Do you like one point three?
So you're talking about this one?
Yeah, because we're getting a consensus.
Every one point three tag.
Oh, sorry.
So how about this, how about we open the floor for a motion, we'll set up time for a discussion, but does anybody wanna make a motion on one point three?
The one point three tagline?
I, I say we go without the tagline, I don't think we need the tagline at this point, because.
Does the tagline this whole scene?
Yeah, but I think we can, that's that Route sixty-six, Painted Desert.
Oh, okay.
I think we can hold off on that.
So maybe we're just voting on this.
Yeah, unless you guys wanna vote on the tagline, that's just my opinion.
The concept two and past just doesn't, it, it doesn't say Holbrook, it doesn't, I can't even.
Sunset's everywhere.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I like that it's a half circle, but I like the Arizona cutout better.
Where are you at, I see, which one?
Um, concept two and beyond, well, concept two and two point two with the half circle without the, um, teepees.
But just in the black and white?
No, like, I don't like the half circle, 'cause it doesn't say, like, y'all Holbrook to me.
So are you leaning towards one?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Which one?
Um, I like concept one. And I also like the one that has the brown on the bottom, and concept one point three. The only difference is the brown on the bottom, and then concept one has blue.
Oh, okay.
I like the one. I like one point three, because there's dirt that brown, yeah.
Holbrook's known for our dirt. That's our walking trails.
We need a glowing tree in here.
Tumbleweed.
All right, uh, we'll open the floor for a motion.
Um, I'll make a motion to, is it move forward?
To approve?
To approve concept one point three.
Okay, I have a motion? Second? Tammy's got a second, okay, we'll keep opening it up for discussion here, so we do have a motion on the table for one point.
So now, now you're talking about that one?
Correct, one point three. And we said we can add a tagline later, it, it's not gonna affect the actual logo itself.
Because even if you just see the picture alone, you know that's Holbrook.
People do associate Holbrook with teepees.
There's not any way we show dust blowing.
That's the dirt on the bottom.
That's the brown on the bottom.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor for approving concept one point three, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
None.
All right, motion passes. Thank you. Oh, we're gonna miss people, I thought it was gonna be, so, great. All right, item number B, uh, fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five priorities, follow-up and consensus, so tab three. So I just wrote up a little action item request, um, so it says, "Holbrook City Council members set priorities for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five that were to be implemented throughout the year in consideration with the annual budget. The five priorities that were set were, one, Main Street revitalization and beautification, two, streets and sidewalks, three, walking trails, four, revitalization and development of the clubhouse at Hidden Cove Golf Course and the surrounding areas, five, fishing pond and amphitheater." Those are the ones we decided right before the budget talks back in May of last year. Um, so the request for council action, I said, "To ensure city management clearly understands the council's priorities and vision, establishing more specific goals and directives will help guide staff in effectively fulfilling the council's intended outcomes. Discussion to reach a consensus on priorities based on the outcomes of the Holbrook City Council Strategic Planning Work Session held on February third, twenty twenty-five." So what I did on this page was basically took our priorities that we talked about back in May, and then our discussion that we had a couple of weeks back, saying, how do we tell staff, hey, streets and sidewalks, good luck, right? So, they were asking for a little bit more specific guidelines, and so based off our discussion, I wrote these down, but I wanna go over them with you guys in case I, I was off the mark on it. So, what I was hoping tonight, we're like, hey, is this kind of the direction we wanna see administration go for the next couple of months, till we get to the next budget year? If I'm missing something, now's the time to speak up. Um, we need to add to it based off of our conversations, off our intent. So this isn't the time to add new priorities, this is based off our ones that we budgeted, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so the first one, we'll, I'll just talk about the first one, we'll have a conversation, then we'll move on to the other ones. So number one, Main Street revitalization and beautification. Staff will continue to rigorously enforce code violations with a focus on longstanding violations and dilapidated properties along Navajo and Hopi Boulevard. Are these realistic, and what we'll do is, we'll say what we think's realistic, and then we will ask staff to make sure they feel like they've got the capacity to do this as well. So, is that, are we in line of what we talked about?
Yeah.
Okay, do we need to add anything or edit it? Okay. Item number two, streets and sidewalks. Update the five-year street improvement plan. Prioritize repairs on high-traffic streets in the poorest condition. Provide training for street crew to enhance efficiency and quality. Communicate the street improvement plan and progress to the pub, the public. Um, so, that's saying, I know they're already currently working on a s- five-year update plan on that one, so they're already doing some of these, so like I said, it's just to make sure we're still online. Um, but to make sure the council is saying, hey, we want to prioritize repairs on high-traffic streets in the poorest condition. So did that summarize our discussion? Are we missing anything?
Set her on that look three.
Okay, number three, walking trails. Identify potential trail locations in and around Holbrook. Install clear and informative signage along designated trails. Grade pathways for easier accessibility, promote the trails through targeted marketing efforts.
No, I don't think we've even touched on that, have we?
Well, that was one of our priorities, um, that we talked about before.
Do we have?
For this coming.
We don't, and so that's why we said to identify potential trail locations, so.
That's what my, uh, committee's been doing.
Okay. Also, this is for the coming.
Yeah.
Well, no, this is twenty-four, twenty-five, so this is.
That's what we discussed last year.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
So this is what we are supposed to be working on, and so, uh, Councilwoman Pack, as part of her general plan, has been saying, hey, we are trying to create a plan and identify some of these, and then when they're done, they can take their information and hand it off to staff for them to be able to start it, you know, installing the signage and kind of making it clear to the public. So did, so Councilwoman Pack, does that kind of summarize what we're hoping for?
Yeah, so we, and I'm hoping with my committee to have a, um, like, the places that we would think that trails would be most of, like, kind of like a, um, priority for.
Oh, perfect.
For trails, for, um, safety for people. And then, kind of, digressing from that, and then what it would need, but yeah, it would include that, so.
No, that's smart, because we can't say, let's take the worst potential hike and start with that one, right? Let's get one that's close, right? So like, along the levee, people are kind of using anyways, there's probably just a little bit of signage that's needed there, maybe some grading.
And, and points of access, right?
And points of access, yes. So, we'll make sure that's added, so, perfect, thank you. All right, any else on walking trails? Okay, number four, revitalization and development of the clubhouse at Hidden Cove Golf Course and the surrounding area. Designate the golf course clubhouse renovation as a priority capital project. Develop a detailed scope of work for the renovation, initiate the bidding process based on the finalized scope of work. So as we talked about at the strategic planning session, we all agreed that the clubhouse, we'd like to see that done and get, move it on right away. Um, so, the council at the time had asked me to see if I could ask, uh, my husband to, see if he could help with the scope of work and things like that. Unfortunately, he's just, um, with his own jobs, hasn't been able to do things like that, so, we'll probably put that back in the, the hands of administration on that one. He was a little also concerned about liability and, um, and, uh, staying above reproach on things, so.
Yeah. So we, are we gonna have to bid out for someone to do that?
Well, I think council, I think if we talk with staff that's already out there, they, they know that clubhouse inside and out, should understand the scope of work that needs to be done, so, yes.
And I think what we had said at the last meeting was, you wanted a design, and then we would put the bid out, so everybody bids on the same thing, not, this is my design, this is my design, and then we have to pick apples to oranges, that's why we're gonna go, so we can find another, um, architect, designer, or something, and get some preliminary plans with.
And I'm not sure, it doesn't even need a full design, or does it just need to say, we need to update the kitchen, update water, update things? Cause I don't know, I don't think we're, we're actually, like, relocating kitchen from one side to the other, so, design-wise.
No, we're, we're keeping the basic structure, but there was a lot of extend here, extend there, the bathrooms need to be totally redone, the kitchen needs to be totally redone. It's not ADA compliant at all.
So part of that could be done, I believe, in verbiage, instead of actually plan, design.
Yeah, highly need somebody to, to do that.
Cause it could get expensive too on a design, so, potentially, so, and that's the thing, so David's capacity is like.
We'll put out our builders and find somebody there.
So David, at first, we thought if it was just a scope of work, but once there was like a design process, and they're like, that's a whole nother level up of, um, requirements and.
So we can find out and see what kind of design we can come up with, just so when we do put the bid out, everybody's bidding on the same thing.
And we appreciate that, so, all right.
And I'm sorry, included in that would have to be the pump house, which could be anywhere from five to seven hundred thousand, but when that pump goes, their golf course is done.
That's not part of the same bid, that'd just be a.
Not for the design, but I'm saying, when you're talking about getting everything done at the golf course, that, that pump does need to be redone, so, just take that into consideration.
Nope, we appreciate that, and that'll be a good conversation for our budget talks for twenty-five, twenty-six. So, but this one is specifically for the clubhouse, so, perfect. And then number five, um, was the fishing pond and amphitheater. So we're just asking staff to pursue potential grant opportunities for funding and resolve the water issues on the west end of town, which I know they are working on for multiple reasons, so.
Probably resolve the water issue first before going into grant opportunities.
Well, I say we do both at the same time, because grants take a while to identify and apply, and then wait for them, so. Like I said, this is just for twenty-four, twenty-five, we can start applying, we better have, hopefully have that water issue resolved the next month, cause, yeah.
Solution.
That's true.
To that water issue, so wait up.
Because depending on what it is, could be an opportunity or could not be.
We're going with opportunity, thank you, did you have a comment?
Yes, so, um, the Holbrook's director and I have been going around, um, looking at Arizona and Buffalo and Eighth Street, and we brought Ardura in, since that's who we've been working with, and it was brought up, if we have to divert this water here or whatever, we always brought the pond up. So I wanna let you know that engineers say, right now, that's not a viable option. And I know, I know it's something that's been talked about for years, but if, unless you're gonna use your potable water and you're going to use that fresh water.
To make a.
It's not gonna be, a pond is not a viable option, according to engineers at this point.
Well, I know there's, was another report done on soil things, so there's some more research to be done, depending on how much information everybody has, so. I, I think there's still something we could do down at that area, whether it's a pond, or at least some type of a, we need to do something for our citizens, so. All right, well, let's keep exploring it, that's all we're asking, so.
I know, that's what we hate bringing up, who, you know, about that, because you know that's what you want, so.
We appreciate it, yeah, sounds good, thank you. All right, any, so I'm just looking for consensus tonight, we don't need to vote, cause we've already voted on these priorities, I just wanna make sure this direction that we're giving to staff fits what we're looking for for the next four or five months. Any comments? Okay, so, we have a consensus. Everybody say aye for consensus?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you. All right, moving on to item number nine. New business emergency management plan update discussion, so, tab four.
And I put the emergency plan at the back of your book, so if you have a question.
Thank you, yeah, I'd ask Lisa to put it in the back, because I figured we were gonna be referring back to it, so I figured if you don't keep it with you in the back of your book, you can keep it in your folder, so we didn't have to keep reprinting this, so. I'll read the background and discussion. Says, "The purpose of Holbrook's emergency operation plan is to provide direction and guidance to city government departments and supporting agencies. It constitutes a directive to city departments to prepare for and execute assigned emergency tasks to ensure maximum survival of the population and property in the event of a disaster or emergency. In the event of a natural, technological, or national security disaster affecting the city of Holbrook, city government must be prepared to implement plans and procedures to protect lives and property. Holbrook's emergency operation plan was last updated in two thousand and two, as far as we can find, unless staff has found a more updated one, since I talked to you guys last week." So this is where we're going from. And I wanna thank, uh, Councilwoman Pacheco, um, for inquiring about this plan, and to bring it to our attention that, hey, there should be one on file, and we should be, as a council, we should be aware of our roles and responsibilities, and, um, so, did you have a question?
Um, I just have an update on that, that, um, D V and Chief Christensen were, were gonna be working on that the first of March, or starting March, when Chief was not on patrol.
Okay, perfect, thank you. So, we appreciate you understanding that after twenty-three years, it's probably time for an update, so.
So, it's probably important to note that if. So, it's probably important to note that, that this was in two thousand and two during the rodeo Chedesky fire. And at that time, Holbrook was a staging center. The schools were used as stores, there were places where people that had to evacuate to shelters here in Holbrook. It was in the summer, the LDS church was used as a warehouse. It, this, when this was written during Brian Smith's term as mayor, this was really on, on the mind of, of people, right after nine eleven, the year before, and right during this fire.
Well, that's good to know, and, and that's the thing, we are, unfortunately, we do have a railroad that runs right through our town that carries hazardous waste. We have a freeway that comes by, carrying dangerous materials and things like that. Um, so, the best way to plan for emergencies, be prepared, and so, hopefully, we won't ever need it. But it's important to know, um, in the schools, they go through their annual safety, yearly, they have drills constantly with students and, uh, community members and tablecloth exercises and things like that. And the city, it's nice to know, so after last week, um, we had a water break. It didn't constitute an emergency, but it got us asking the question, what does constitute an emergency? Water was out for eight hours, well, does it constitute an emergency at twenty-four hours, or where does it go? So, my question at the time, last week, was like, how do we define it? And luckily, in this packet, if you go to page, um, I believe it's five, there's definitions, which is nice, and we won't go through all of them, I just wanna hit a couple of highlights to get everybody thinking about it, and then as, um, our safety officer and our chief of police come, we're prepared to say, hey, make sure the updates kind of fit all our different scenarios that we're involved with, so. Um, cause I know with Vice Mayor Nelson, he deals a lot with our aging population, it's like, is there, make sure there's provisions for them in there, and so. Anyway, just a few of them, um, definitions, like an anticipated emergency, those are conditions which, because of their nature, may require mobilization of emergency forces if conditions increase in severity. So, we potentially know something that potentially could happen, are we prepared, let's get everybody in line. If we've learned anything from the, um, fires in California, right? They said, there should have been some things in place, make sure the hydrants were full and the reservoirs and things like that, so, they should be anticipating an emergency, so we should anticipate what are our potential, you know, emergencies here. Um, chief executive is the city's highest functioning elected official, city administrative, administrative office is the city's highest functioning salaried official designated by published line of succession. An emergency says, is a situation arising with or without warning, causing or threatening death, injury, or disruption to normal life for numbers of people in excess of those which can be dealt with by the public services operating under normal conditions, and which requires special mobilization and organization of those forces. So, that's a good definition of-
That's pretty broad.
Yeah, so, um, so then they talk about like, uh, emergency operations center, uh, the emergency operation plan. Um, I wanna jump down to limited emergency at the bottom of your page. So, this is probably more likely what's gonna happen to us, a limited emergency, it says, an event which requires responsive emergency forces over and above normal working functions, but which is manageable within local capability. So, how we interpret that, like, an emergency, maybe is as we need outside sources, uh, limited emergency means, yeah, there's some problems, but we can handle it with our own staffing. Um, if we need to edit any of these definitions, this is something we will get with administration on. Uh, if you turn the page to top of six, says, local emergency. The existence of conditions of disaster or of extreme peril to the safety of persons or property, which are beyond the capability of the city to handle and will require the assistance of other political entities. A major disaster is any catastrophe which, in the determinis- determination of the president, causes damage or sufficient severity and magnitude to warrant federal assistance to supplement the effort of state and local government and disaster relief organizations in alleviating damage, loss, and hardship. Probably doesn't come to that point, but we've seen nationally where, you know, a train derailment has, actually, brought on a-
Eastland in Ohio, right?
Yeah, they had to bring in things, so, radioactive material, I mean, that's, we don't know what's going through our towns. Um, but response, the effort to minimize the risk created by an emergency by protecting the people, environment, and property, and the efforts to return the scene to normal pre-emergency conditions. Anyway, so you can read through those, but I just kind of wanna highlight those main definitions of emergencies. And then, let's go over to page eight. I promise it'll only take a few minutes on this, we're not gonna read the whole thing. Um, but I wanted the council to understand their role in potential emergencies here. Uh, so the city of Holbrook emergency operation plan, um, says, all areas within the city of Holbrook are vulnerable to the adverse efforts of natural, man-caused, and war-related disasters which may result in the loss of life, social disruption, and property damage. The following is a summary of some of the possible hazards that have potential to disrupt the peace and order, causing damage and create casualties in the city of Holbrook. So, they talk about floods, and storms, and fires, and highway accidents, things like that, power failures, water supply system failures, hazardous materials, airplane crash, hostage crisis, nuclear attack, train derailment. And so, um, we can even add, I don't know if we wanna add like, active shooting, I know that's one that, when I've talked to the school districts in the past, if there's an active shooter at any of the schools, they are gonna need to utilize city staff or traffic control, and of course, our PD's, the first on staff. So, purpose, to provide direction and guidance to the city government departments and supporting county, state, federal, and private relief agencies to facilitate responses to the possible disasters within the city. So, implementation, the final responsibility for all emergency management belongs to the elected officials comprising the Holbrook City Council. So, there's a weight for each of us, right? The final responsibility for all emergency management belongs to elected officials.
But like during, during the rodeo Chedesky, the Red Cross would come and try and take that from you, right? They would try and take over, and what, what Brian found out at the time was that anything you give away, it's really, really hard to get back. And so, it's important that the elected officials stay in charge and not delegate it. But, I mean, not, not give that authority away, but delegate that to the, to FEMA and to whoever else comes to help you.
That is good to know, so. Says, the city council is responsible for all policy decisions. So, it talks about conditions of normal conditions, right, action and preparedness, review and update plan and procedures, that's what we're doing now, right? B, maintain and upgrade communication systems. Um, this is a good one, I know we've talked about in the past, last year, about, um, when we were updating the website, and maybe the phone systems, be able to get a kind of a messaging system out through our phone. Navajo County has one, but city of Holbrook really probably should look back into seeing that, um. By the way, the school district has the offer, the next time there's any kind of a, even a temporary emergency, that we're welcome to use their messaging system, cause they have one set up, which is nice. And that's why partnerships are really important, so.
That's, I was just gonna say that about the phone, where we can go on the phone system to contact our citizens in an emergency situation.
Sadly. Phone's gonna be our best bet, you know, a lot of times, if there is a natural disaster, or some kind of major disaster, a lot of times your phone lines might go down, or your internet goes down. Internet goes down for squirrels sometimes, right? Eating through a line, so. Right, C, develop and maintain a supply of maps, charts, and supplies for the EOC, which is the emergency operations center. D, train staff to perform responsibilities through periodic emergency preparedness exercises. And then if we move up to the next condition, which is disaster imminent or occurring, um, and the action is mitigation or response. A, assemble and brief the Holbrook Emergency Response Organization and private sector representatives as appropriate to advise them of the situation. B, review actions for Incident Command Center, possible mitigation, public warnings, evacuations and shelters, deployment of resources, damage assessment, turn the page, it has two more. If appropriate, the mayor as chief executive issues a local emergency proclamation, which activates the city of Holbrook Emergency Operation Plan. Seven, notification of county and state emergency services. And then the other condition, with a disaster emergency is under control, we can reduce the EOC staff or close it. Identify and coordinate preparation of facilities to be used as a disaster assistance center for individual assistance. Three, identify engineering personnel and collect records and preparation for damage survey team arrival. Four, monitor repair, restoration work. And five, coordinate final inspection and audits. So, I'm just gonna go over two more pages, and then we'll call it for the night. You have a question?
Well, just something on, I don't know where you would put it exactly, but, so, when you say this about the mayor as chief executive, so, would they be the ones that, they would be the ones that would be talking to the news, or, I mean, cause we can't have all kinds of different people-
So, our, our CIO is the city clerk.
Who are talking to news or people like that.
Lisa's the PIO. So, e- every city should identify PIO.
So, Chief Christensen does the main, but I am also a PIO.
Yeah, so, I know when I worked for the city, uh, city, I also took the classes to be a PIO and things like that, and so that's something we might wanna evaluate. Who do we want as the PIO, especially if you're retiring soon, we need to do it. And you take training, because there are certain things you should and shouldn't say, right? So, you're representing, so you gotta be careful, so they should be trained, and they're, you know, they're actually certification, training for it, so.
And I think, and I think that's something we should have in here.
I agree. Who talks to, um-
Yeah, I think it actually is on the list of people, the public information officer.
So, we don't have that updated list, and I didn't make a copy, I know you did, cause then we're gonna have to update it, most people weren't accurate there, so.
Also, like, incident command, right? You, it would, it'd normally be here, but if the emergency were here, then you'd have to, you might want it up at the firehouse up that way, or if it was all of Holbrook, you might want it at the firehouse.
And they do say that, on operations, they do have two, but I believe you're right, we should have a third one.
Because there is a railroad and a freeway that divides us into thirds, so.
That's a good point, so let's add that, we need a third location.
I think Navajo County just put out their emergency preparedness plan today, was on there, so it might be a good idea to review theirs.
That is good, and we should be good partners with all, like I said, all our stakeholders here. Okay, well, just quickly go over the operation procedures, and then, um, just our roles here. So, one, upon plan activation, the city administrative officer on behalf of the mayor slash chief executive will exercise overall direction, and will exercise direction and control of respective resources throughout the emergency operations center. Two, I know I talk fast, but it comes in handy tonight, right?
Yeah.
If I need to slow down, you guys just tell me. Initially, Holbrook City Departments will exercise normal daily operations. Upon EOC activation, overall coordination will be exercised from the EOC. Each operating department and supporting agency will provide a liaison to the EOC as appropriate. When it is possible, normal administration procedures will be followed. Three, the city of Holbrook Emergency Operations Center will be, A, the primary facility utilized to coordinate emergency operations in a local emergency. It will maintain constant communications with the responding departments through the Incident Command Center and with the Navajo County Division of Emergency Services. B, partially or fully manned on a twenty-four-hour basis as determined by the mayor or city council and city administrative officer. C, established by the mayor or city council, supervised by the city administrative officer, and directed by the emergency service coordinators. D, there's our locations, we will read through those, they've got one on Airport Road and one on Buffalo Street, the police station, and one at the fire station. Two, Incident Command Center, when activated, the city administrative officer will coordinate an Incident Command Center near the emergency area to be staffed by the appropriate responding departments. Information will be relayed from the field ICC to the Emergency Operations Center by whatever appropriate communication facilitates available. Page ten, reporting, each department supervisor or ranking representative in the chain of command responding to the city emergency will submit an hourly report. Uh, five, emergency purchases, tells you what you can improve, emergency goods and services. Six, documentation, each department of the city involved will maintain operational control over its personnel, equipment, and supplies at all time, so we don't give it out to anybody. B, to substantiate reimbursement for emergency expenditures should reimbursement come available, doc, you just have to have your documents, so. All right, Holbrook Emergency Response Organization, which is, the acronym is HERO, responsibilities, so the mayor order the activation of the city of Holbrook Emergency Operations Plan and the Emergency Operations Center when conditions warrant. B, made by proclamation, declare a local emergency to exist within the city. After declaration of such emergency, the mayor may govern by proclamation and impose all necessary regulations to preserve the peace and order of the city, including but not limited to, one, imposition, imposition of a curfew in all or any portion of the city, two, ordering the closing of any business, three, closing of public access to any public building, street, or other public place, four, calling upon regular or auxiliary law enforcement agencies or organizations within or without the political subdivision for assistance. So, the succession is the mayor, second is vice mayor. All right, next page, city council. Says, a majority of the council may terminate the exercise of such emergency powers by the mayor, chief executive, or his or her successors. I know this has happened where the mayor wanted to keep, uh, the emergency going, and the council is like, no, it's been long enough, we, we can shut it down, so. B, the city council may issue the emergency proclamation and impose all necessary regulations to preserve the peace and order of the city if the mayor, chief executive, or his or her successor isn't inaccessible. City manager and administrative officer assist and acts as chief advisor to the mayor and or city council. B, direct emergency operations to include the recovery effort. C, supervise operation of the Incident Command Center, communicating information and instructions to the Emergency Operations Center. D, establish guidelines for maintaining and preserving vital records and a file of all intergovernmental agreements. E, ensure continued city operations and reconstitutes governmental functions during and after catastrophic disasters. And then your succession, that was when Kern Larson was city manager, city clerk. And that's our succession, city manager, city clerk, city finance director, and then chief of police. So, that is all I'm gonna read tonight. So, there's more here, we can read through it, it goes into D. I just thought it was important for everybody to understand our role as a council in an emergency.
Is Kat Chincon still the-
Yes.
County?
Yes, and they do a great job out there. So, it wouldn't hurt to get her in here to talk about their emergency management plan, how we can work with the county.
This thing is just pretty close to here.
Yeah, so, and she'll be affected by it as well, so. Anybody have any questions, comments? If there's, read through it, if there's any concerns you have, now is the time, as they're updating, the staff is updating it, to make sure we add anything else that we need to, I think it's a great idea to add a third location. Um, like you said, just even separated by where our major blocks could be, so. All right, so, any discussion? Good, all right. Hearing none? So, we're gonna skip my, um, top, and most of council just literally right before here. Um, before we jump into the summary of current events, I do want to jump over to thirteen A, the post-executive session. And I apologize, Lisa, for not catching this earlier, but, um, the discussion possible action on the impact of staffing and legal costs on the current fiscal year's budget. This is a topic for the public, so I don't want to lose the public as we go into an executive session. Since the executive sessions aren't specifically talking about the budget, I feel like we can move that forward to, to now. So, anybody have any concerns with that?
About moving it now?
Correct, we're talking about it now? You good, all right, thank you. All right, so we'll do thirteen A right now, so. All right, so, we go to thirteen A. So, discussion possible action on the impact of staffing and legal costs on the current fiscal year's budget. Possible action to approve a budget amendment in the amount of two hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars, two hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred nine dollars from the library, golf course, animal control, fire, and senior de- and senior center departments for the payment of additional requ- retirement funds in the fleet department, and additional professional services in the administration department, so. In preparation for this, um, as I, I've been signing a lot, I go in and sign checks weekly for our expenditures, and my concern was, well, we've talked about it the last meeting, that our priority thing with going over our budget, um, to see which ones were a little bit, or going over budget, and by the end of the fiscal year, we would be over budget. Um, our finance director came and showed us, we had the documentation showing that administration was one of them, and so that's, that's what we're gonna talk about. Um, but my big concern in it was, we talked about a few weeks ago, was the cost of our attorney fees. Um, we were told the Patel case is, um, a big portion of it, but as we go through it, that's not our only, um, challenge here. So, I had requested a, uh, list of, um, the actual specific invoices to see really where is all this money going here. And so, what you have in front of you is a package, and it's very complex. But it's, it breaks down, cause I've had council members ask me, it's like, okay, what are we spending this money on, right? I know when we talked about like, with Solomon, um, services, I thought it was all animal control, wasn't until recently I found out, oh, he's also was doing some code enforcement as well. And so, that's good to know.
PD.
So, PD, things like that, so it's nice to know specifically where we're going. Um, but, my biggest concern is, we have, and Mr. Sullivan, correct me if I'm wrong, I wanna go to our, what we budgeted for the year. Um, let me get to my budget. For administrative class four, these attorney fees is coming out of professional consulting, is that correct?
Correct.
I'm making my glasses for these, so, so professional consulting fees is on page twelve of your budget, if anybody has their budget in front of them still. I just think, keep in mind in my packet, so, um, we have for professional consulting fees, we had budgeted for the year fifty-five thousand dollars, is that correct? As far as you know, Sharon? Do you have your budget for professional and consulting?
In administration?
Yes.
No, the budget was a hundred and twenty-three thousand, we spent-
Okay, so which ones are those coming out of? So, we got professional and consulting at fifty-five thousand, is under, or a hundred and nine thousand, it says fiscal year twenty-five budget? So, is that a hundred and nine thousand? Do you guys have a budget in front of you by chance?
I do, but I don't have the-
I have the budget, it's a hundred and twenty- I have the budget, it's a hundred and twenty-three is what we budgeted in admin.
Am I looking at an old budget?
Twenty-three in admin?
Yes.
And so what line item is it under?
Fifty, forty-one.
So, under professional and consulting?
Yes.
So that's what I was saying, so, so we have how much, you're saying?
So, a hundred and twenty-three was budgeted and we've spent to date, uh, two hundred thirty-nine, seventy-one thousand, twenty cents.
So, we've spent two hundred thirty-nine, that's the bottom of this page that you guys got right here?
So for a quarter of a million dollars, couldn't we buy our own lawyer?
That's what I said.
So, I, I also, I have a breakdown of this packet that you got. And so Brown and Brown are our water, um, lawyers. We've spent from all of twenty-four, so that's January to December twenty-four, plus these two months, two hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and five dollars and sixty cents.
Two hundred, oh, can you say that again, two hundred and nine thousand?
Yep, two hundred nine, nine oh five, sixty. And that is all of twenty-four, not fiscal, I verified that with Randy today.
So really fast, on this other sheet that Lisa had given out at the beginning, so we have this breakdown on the second page too where it has attorney other than admin, Brown and Brown Water adjudication for ninety-one thousand, seven eighty-nine, is that just for then, this fiscal year? So we've spent this fiscal year, ninety-one.
We paint them for thirty years. Thirty years.
So the one I hear where it says Brown and Brown, the ninety-one thousand?
That's this fiscal year.
That's for this fiscal year, so that's July one until now.
Is that correct?
Yeah, that's a waste of money.
Thank you, so, so that's just them, so, yeah, if everybody turns to the back, I think all of you guys are there, so this is a nice breakdown. So these are all just a breakdown of this fiscal year? So if we start at the top, the Patel lawsuit so far has cost us eighty-three thousand, five hundred fifty-three dollars, is that correct? Just this fiscal year? And that's after risk management already spent fifty thousand on our behalf, is that correct?
Well, well, that is including, that part of risk management is, is in that number too.
Because we sent, I had two checks that I paid last month, one said Snell. Uh, Snell, whatever it was, that was thirty thousand dollars that we paid a check just recently for.
Yeah, that was Sell, Sell and Associates, thirty-one, five eighty-eight, seventy-five.
What was it?
Thirty-one thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight.
Oh, yeah, I think it's on this side, it's over here, if you see it. If you look it up on the front.
So what's that for?
And that was the Patel case as well, correct?
Oh, right, your Sell and Associates.
So.
So when we win that case, are they gonna reimburse us for our fees?
You can ask for it, but they said you have to usually take people to court to actually get it, that doesn't mean you actually get paid. That was my experience on a, another matter.
So, when you take somebody to court, the only people that ever benefit are the lawyers, right?
Exactly, yeah. So, so that, we're on track, 'cause just this month alone, my expenditures. We spent, the Doyle firm, do you look at your uh weekly, your monthly expenditure that you get in your box? There is also the Doyle firm, that was them, for an additional twenty-six thousand.
Who's that for?
And you said that was Patel as well. So, so I guess our question is, are we doing anything, talking to the attorneys at all, saying, hey, slow down, maybe we should settle? Um, I know you can't talk on the legal stuff like that, but do the attorneys just have free reign to just do what they want and charge us? Are we saying, hey, can we slow down?
It should be winding down by the end of March, I got an email today, um, with some dates, again, I don't wanna
Yeah.
Um, say anything, because it is a lead ongoing case, um, but I think we should see things slowing down or some decision being made pretty soon.
Okay, appreciate that, so.
Cause we will be in mediation.
Okay, and who knows how much that'll still cost us, if it costs us thirty thousand a month, so far. And that's a problem, by the end of March, that costs, if we haven't paid for February's or March, that could be an additional sixty thousand on top of this already. So we have to a hundred and forty thousand. So, let's keep going and then we'll go back and kinda digest all of it, how's that? Um, some of these other expenditures we've done for consulting fees and things like that. Uh, there's O S H Consulting, P L L C, uh, that was to help apply for the GADA loan that we said we don't wanna pursue anymore, but the city spent four thousand, one hundred and eighty-nine dollars on consulting fees, yes, sorry, send me, I mean, councilman, check it out?
Okay, let's see, that was, what, are we, we're looking at the O S H?
Yes.
That was for Form Four, that the Form Forty-one?
If you look on the back, look on the back.
Oh.
On the back, sorry, yeah.
Where, where are you at?
Yeah, it's on the back page, sorry.
And, so, that was, so we paid four thousand to help, for them to help us?
Do you wanna explain what that was?
So, O S H Consulting worked with Randy on pulling all the information we needed to apply for the GADA application.
Okay.
Cause we got, into the application.
So, did we pay this prior to going out to apply for it, or before?
Yes, because that was a part of having to get all your financials together to prove things and substantiate that you would be able to actually afford if you did move forward with the, uh, the GADA application.
So if you look at the front page, there was a payment on September sixteenth to them for seventeen hundred sixty-four dollars. Again, on October fourth, twenty twenty-four, for another one thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars, and then another one on November sixth, for four hundred forty-one dollars.
So that is, we're paying them to get all of our paperwork together to
Apply for the loan.
To apply for the loan. Which we aren't gonna do.
Did we know this, did we? That we didn't do after all? Did we, did we know we had to pay prior to applying for the loan? I don't, did we know that?
That was never part of the discussion.
I didn't, I don't remember, I'm trying, when did we discuss the GADA loan?
We didn't till recently, um.
November, maybe?
Uh.
October, November?
O S H, okay, so, so we.
And those fees would've been covered if we went for the loan and got it, got a technical assistance grant to cover that. It would cover, most of the time, those technical assistance cover engineering costs and costs like this to help you apply for the
But this is basically to see if we apply, this was to see if we qualified.
Qualified.
So, is that something our staff could've done? Just, we're just gonna, tonight, we're gonna say, where can we find cost savings moving forward? Uh, is that something, next time our finance director could handle?
Not with the back and forth, I think that Dennis and, and Randy did. Uh, Randy could probably give a little bit more insight and maybe with what, after working with Dennis, maybe Randy has the ability to, to do that, and again, all grant applications are different in what the requirements are.
Uh, okay, my only, my concern now, that I'm getting these numbers now, and then when we discussed the actual GADA loan itself. We discussed the GADA loan recently, prior or post, let's see, September sixteenth, after October fourth, and after November sixth, we discussed the GADA loan, when did we actually have the GADA loan presented to us to see if we were gonna, would go forth, to see if we were, if we qualified? And then once we got the qualif, once we said, okay, well, ha, just re, just refresh my memory. Cause I'm just trying to see, did we pay for these prior to it being presented to council, and then we went ahead and decided not to go forward with the GADA loan? So we had already paid almost, what was this, eight, how much was the GADA loan? Four thousand, we paid four thousand dollars in attorney's or consulting fees prior to the GADA loan being presented to the council to see if we're gonna go forth with it?
Yes, so, and I think GADA's actually changed their way of applying because they wanted resolutions and things from council before we even got the loan and everybody's going, well, if we're, why are we gonna go and get resolutions and get all this stuff done if we don't even know if we're gonna get the loan? So they, they changed their process, but for us to apply for this, um, we requested O S H's help
Okay.
To help us apply for it.
So, we applied for it after, so it was brought to council, how do I say this?
We applied for it before bringing it to council, because we applied for it.
To see.
We were pretty much guaranteed that we were gonna get it, but council decided that they didn't wanna move forward with a loan at this time.
But prior to going out and getting this information, we were, were we aware of the GADA loan? And what, how much it would be for if we got the loan? If we qualified, were we here of that before?
Well, we had the discussion, those of us, I'm not sure who we were, when we went to the, um, the league of.
Like, eight, eight million dollars, that's what they were.
Yeah, eight million.
Cause then we were gonna be paying for that for the next like thirty years.
Well, I remember that, at the conference.
I remember that, yeah.
Cause I remember, I was concerned that we were gonna rush into it, cause they needed an answer by like March, and I thought, we don't even have our general plan ready to go and and knowing what.
But I don't remember hearing about it in a council meeting, only at the conference.
If we were.
It was brought before the council, we discussed it at the council.
Yeah.
That, that in like November, yeah, so.
We wanna go ahead and apply for it, so.
Yeah, I think just the council was just unaware that we had to pay for part of that, so. All right, so moving on to Civic Plus, L L C, that's a new website, so we have spent nine thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Moving forward, but be, just to go back to the O S H Consulting and moving forward where we can do cost savings. Prior to consulting for issue, for applications or grants like this, can, can the council be aware of those prior to? Just so that way we know what costs we're going to possibly incur prior to applying, if there's cost savings, like maybe our finance director could get that together.
Absolutely, and normally we don't have, we don't use a consultant for grant applications. So this was a loan, it was, again, it was something different, GADA had been defunct, if you wanna say, for the last seven years, and they just brought it back and I think they were kind of trying to get it up and running and not sure of the process and there were tight timelines and we were scrambling around to, to get our finances together, to just complete the application and the timeline needed.
Cause it sounds to me like we paid four thousand dollars just to apply, even though that's not what it was, but it's pretty much looking to me like we paid to apply.
Well, it is now, because we didn't go for it and we didn't go after technical assistance that we could've gotten reimbursed for it, so.
But yet.
Yeah, it cost eight million to get there though.
Yeah, it would've cost eight million and thirty years, okay, so.
So moving forward, yeah, we'd like to be aware of any potential costs associated with it, thank you. All right, Civic Plus, the new website, it says we've spent this year nine thousand eight hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty cents. Um, how are we coming on our new website?
We're almost there, um, but that Civic Plus is not just the website, it's also, we had our, um, our codes codified. They put it all together and it's up, we have a link on our current website, so it's on there and any amendments that are made will automatically be linked, we got three binders.
Yes.
Three, three full binders printed, nice binders out of that as well.
So will this Civic Plus be a continual charge? That they'll keep our website updated?
Will keep our website updated if we need any major revisions.
So if we finish out this fiscal year, will this number go up at all?
No.
Even with the additional, since the website's not up and running, there's.
No, I'm, I'm still working with, with him on.
But once we do, will there be a cost to that, you think?
Um, I don't know, I'd have to look at their contract to find out what an annual fee is, but it's not.
So this should've been part of the annual fee, the website design, redesign is part of that annual fee?
Yes, yep, yep.
Sorry, uh, Councilwoman Pacheco, did you have a question or comment?
And are we, do we ma, do we maintain that website ourself going forward?
Yep.
Okay.
We actually go through a firm that maintains it, is that correct?
No, I'm, I'm signed up for it, um, I will have Misty sign up, because she does those and then we need to decide who else, um, can do it, maybe Emily at the library, because she posts things.
Once it's up and running?
Once it's up and running.
But for now, we're still using a firm, right? Or another group, or use like me?
Oh, on the old website?
Yeah.
Is, yes, it's some other firm.
So we're still paying them right now for something that does?
Correct, because ours is in.
So the website, I'm sorry, the website on there right now isn't, is it updated? Is it?
I.
It's somewhat up, I mean, it's somewhat, yeah, they still.
It's updated with.
Somewhat better.
Because we use Civic Plus at the county and like, there's about three of us in just my department that has access to up, update.
We can put in whoever we want on there.
Okay, okay. But is that fee, is that amount gonna go up prior or before the end of the fiscal year?
No.
Okay, so that's gonna be, that's end of this one.
So where is the website in the administration and the general fund, do you know what line item that comes out of?
That's under the Professional and Consulting Services, five oh forty-one.
So the company we're currently using though, how much are we paying them monthly?
I don't.
I'd have to pu, pull it, I can't remember.
So there's still a few more months that we have until still Civic Plus.
Yeah, it's, it's Media Duck, I could pull it.
Media, so we will have some additional costs, I mean, that's, we're not capped, we still have four more months.
So we're paying, we're paying two companies to run and update our website. One's not live yet and the other's.
Well, the one that's not live is still being worked on, we're still doing content, um, loading pictures and things like that so, it's still the design phase of it, if you will.
And what else does Civic Plus do, you mentioned it earlier, codifying.
Our codes.
Codes as in updating?
Our city codes.
But what are they doing with the city codes?
They put them all together, they formatted them, put them in a readable format, if you will, and now everything is linked on, on a hosted Civic Plus site.
So it's just that being uploaded onto the website?
Well, they, they, our old codebook needed some, you know, there was, we were using letters and numbers and
Yeah.
different, they, they got everything straightened out, if you'd like to look at it, to where it looks professional.
Oh, so it just.
They completely revamped it.
I mean, a week to, we could've done this, right? Putting it together to make it look nice.
We, we did the old one, we did a little bit, but this is a professional company that did it, and they'll also keep updating it for us, correct? Cause we've already gotten a few new codes since we've done that.
But this, um, will the, the nine thousand eight hundred and ninety-six, will there be more expense in addition to that?
Not this year.
Well, at least the Media Duck though, was like their monthly.
No, Media Duck, yeah.
But if they're gonna be the ones that are updating that codebook, then like next fiscal year, then there would be charges, correct?
Uh, depending on how many codes we change, if we add codes, or, I mean, if we don't, they don't have anything to do.
I just think that might be something that we could do in-house. I mean, if you have the base, if you have the concept, you could just throw a copy in it wherever it goes.
I just wanna make sure we're doing the.
When you put up a new website, that it, it is kinda pricey, I mean, it's not an outrageous amount, if they're they're putting it up from scratch.
So my concern was just, is we're trying to make sure we have enough money to finish out the administration budget that we account for the last couple of months that we have with Media Duck, so, that's all I was asking. Okay, and then Pierce Coleman, so that's our city council attorney, so for the last six months, we've spent.
I thought we had terminated him.
No, no, that was Solomon. That's Solomon, that's the one on the bottom, we'll get to him, so, so Pierce Coleman. So, that's what you have, um, I don't know if we have them specifically too, Brown and Brown. So Pierce Coleman, if you start looking at the front of your page, so we basically started them in June, so these, yeah.
Last year?
So we have, this, so this price, eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred fifty-eight thousand, I'm just gonna say ninety thousand, cause we're only forty-two dollars off here. Um, ninety thousand for Pierce Coleman in the last, since June, or July, June thirtieth was the first one. So if you see June thirtieth, we spent thirty-two hundred dollars for him. Uh, in August, we paid fifty-two hundred, September, five thousand. Um, October, we paid fourteen thousand, six thirty-eight, again, in November, we spent fourteen thousand on him. Uh, Pierce Coleman in December second was ten thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, January first, we spent thirteen thousand, and then February tenth, we spent twenty-two thousand dollars last month, just on Pierce Coleman. And so, in the last few months, so part of the, the discussion tonight too, is we decide what to do. Um, Pierce Coleman has offered us to do a flat fee instead. June, we went from, you know, three thousand, five thousand a month, up to potentially twenty-two thousand a month, so they're saying, hey, if we wanna try to level it out, we do a flat fee and kind of adjust as we go. Um, their flat fee would've been about thirteen thousand a month is what they were estimating based off these numbers, but they would want a hundred thousand dollar retainer, and so to do that. But at thirteen thousand, we've already spent ninety thousand and.
So that would be at least six months, and then Justin said, you know, we could look at what our payments were. He thinks the thirteen thousand might be low based on what we've been doing, but. But that was all of us trying to fix things from the past, I think that number will come down. As we're creating our own documents and then saying, check this, is it?
Yeah.
Okay, so my, oh, go ahead, excuse me. So this twenty-two thousand in February, I, I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I do recall something about the budget, how the administration had already gone over. Budget and we were pulling money from all these places to replace that in administration. And then we turn around in February and spend twenty-two thousand dollars more? So that makes us another twenty-two thousand dollars over the administrative budget.
We haven't got February's bill yet.
Well, that, that is, but two.
That is one of February's.
Yeah, that is one of February's.
Well, that's when we paid the check, it was for the January invoice.
Oh, you paid, so that was January.
Well, I got you.
So that was January's invoice, we paid in February.
So what do we get for these services?
That's what I'm trying to figure out, you say doing, we're redoing past contracts or re, amongst.
Well, you've got, we've, you've got the um, star N that you moved forward and said that we'll go to litigation. I don't believe that's gone to litigation yet because they're still trying to negotiate with the property owner. Um, code enforcement has had some liens that they've sent cases through.
But code enforcement, you said it was with Solomon, right?
Yeah, she said it was Solomon.
Well, we, we utilize both, depending on.
No. Both, okay.
And that's why we're trying to just shift everything to Pierce Coleman, since they're our, our major legal counsel?
So who is, who is allowed, like who makes the call to the attorney? Like can anybody, like if I called the attorney to ask him, whatever, or who's?
So, um, Chief, uh, Kristin Shin's been going for PD, Barbara's been going for code enforcement, I've been doing it for administration. Um, the last time I talked to Alan, our discussion was, let's just funnel it and have everything go through me so we can see. Maybe this doesn't need to go through, let's work on, you know, doing our own contract or based on what you've already done, maybe in code enforcement. We'll follow this procedure because it seems like the same thing and then just pass it through saying, this is what we've done, this is the way we wanna move forward. Do you agree? And it would cost less than having him create all these documents that have already been done.
Okay, so the, oh, the only ones who are.
And, um, and Brandon in animal control.
Okay, so Brandon in animal control, okay, so Brandon, Chief, Barbara and yourself. Are the only ones who contact the attorney or allowed to contact who, okay, or that, okay.
And we're talking of streamlining that to just make it, everybody come through me.
Cause you said thirteen thousand might not be enough, so if we even said fifteen thousand a month, times twelve months, talking a hundred and eighty thousand. Which I go back to you, we can get us a city attorney for ninety thousand. Cause that's still Pierce Coleman, cause we still have Solomon to talk about, right? So that was just these guys.
Well, well, Solomon's contract.
You and Brown, Brown is different.
Solomon's contract is up the first of March.
And so, but what he was doing still needs to go here, so we're not sure what that's gonna level out with, where, okay, let's look at really fast, turn the page to the back again. So we had the Brown and Browns, we talked about that a little bit, if you talk to Solomon, he did animal control and code enforcement. His bill for the last six months was sixty thousand, so that was ten thousand dollars a month, or basically about eight thousand for the last, um, six, seven months. So technically, that fee will go back up into Pierce Coleman. So we've spent a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the last seven months, just between Pierce Coleman and Solomon. And we have.
It'd be so much cheaper to have a city attorney.
How much?
That's a hundred and fifty, that's seven months, we saw it five months ago, sorry.
What was this compared to last year's budget?
For lawyers, for administrative.
Yeah, la- last year's budget, I did, we did, last year's budget, that fifty-five thousand that you were saying is what we had for.
That was how much we spent on lawyers last year?
In administration.
That's what we budgeted or is that how much, how much we spent?
What's that?
Is that what was budgeted, fifty-five thousand, or is that what we spent?
That's what we budgeted, that's what we budgeted.
What did you spend?
Um, I, I don't know, I don't have those numbers right, well, maybe they're on this.
So who determines which attorney you speak to when you call? Because looking on page five, um.
So that's a good question, all these attorneys were here before I got here, so I don't know how they were selected to do what, I know Solomon was here because.
Cause for the last seven months, so since you've been here.
No, 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 no. No, I, I'm not talking about Solomon.
Yeah.
I'm, so I'm looking at some of these folk, like the, um, the reference to like the dates, so, so we spoke with, let's see, August eighth, or I'm sorry, August sixth. The wastewater reimbursement contract, conduct, relevant analysis to determine proper parameters and reimbursement agreement. So for we, it was three hours, three point four hours.
So you're talking Brown and Brown?
Yeah, no, 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 this is Pierce Coleman, so August sixth, we, it was by Matt Shioomo. And Matt Shioomo, we paid two hundred and twenty-five an hour, or his rate's twenty-five an hour, Alan Quist is two ninety-five an hour. And then Christina Youngberg is one twenty-five an hour, so if we're gonna call, can, is there a way to like, hey, can I just speak with Christina instead of speaking with Alan?
We go through Alan and Alan gives it to whomever in their office, we don't control who.
So when you speak to them, like it tells you who's, it tells you who's being.
So, so then that's dispersed through Pierce Coleman, I don't know, I guess Alan would make the decision, well, you're an intern, you can go ahead and handle this. We don't, we don't select who in Pierce Coleman handles.
So every.
Our point of contact is Justin or Alan?
Okay. So every time we call Alan, we're going to pay him for him to. Delegate somebody else to handle it?
We'd have to find out how he bills that, I'm sure if I send an email, he determines who it goes to and he just sends it to them. That would be a conversation we'd have to have with Pierce Coleman.
But does he handle some of those?
I don't know what, what your conversation was when you hired Pierce Coleman.
Does he handle some of those himself though, without referring you to somebody else?
Yeah, and I don't know what your contract was with Pierce Coleman when you hired him, I believe he came on just before I did, in June, July?
Randy, you acted like you had those numbers for us on, did, did you find them?
For what?
Last year fifty-five.
Last year what we spent.
So, so I budgeted fifty-five, we spent, we ended up spending sixty-seven, or no, no, that's what I was just projected at, so I don't know that act was.
Can you get us that?
I can.
What we spent last year on, you know, attorney fees?
Okay.
Cause I mean already we, I mean, that, that's crazy.
So yeah, so what I did is I took this back page and I added up all of these consulting fees. And I know we said we needed two hundred and thirty-nine thousand, but if you add up the back page, it comes at three hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars is what we've spent this year in the seven months.
So any.
Go ahead.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm like looking at completely different stuff than what you're talking about.
So, but if you take this back page.
Add it.
And add it all up.
That's what we've spent so far?
So we've spent so far, says three hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and forty-five cents.
And, and we're not through, cause it's only February.
We've got, right, and our budget is what? We got February, March, April, May, and we got five more months.
And what's our budget?
A hundred and twenty thousand, so we're already over two hundred thousand, let alone we got five more months to go, so we're in trouble.
Think of the streets we could've built for that.
And does this include the twenty-two thousand?
Yes, okay, that you already wrote the check for. Yeah, cause that was already on this one, so, but I haven't, I don't have got February's bill.
So. Clearly, we, um, clearly we can't go back, but going forward, looking at some of these, the invoice, the, um. I guess the reason why you're calling, like your billables, uh, like the services that we did are, looking at some of these now. Do all of these have to go through, do we, well, I mean, I'm not a city manager. But are some of these things that we could do in-house without having to run it by an attorney every time, or is there, um, like another?
No, I would say everything that's gone through has gone through to make sure that we are in compliance.
But there's not another, you couldn't go through, can we go through the league, can we go through, like talk to a, another colleague, city manager from another, like, hey, like. Have you dealt with something like this, what is your policy like, cause I know, not to compare the two, but.
Well, policies and things like that, we can, because AMR RP actually has, all the members, they have like an email. You know, you're all on the list, and if I wanna send out a, a, an email, a blast to everybody saying, this is my situation, what have you guys done?
Yeah.
We do have access to that, but that's just, this is what we're doing, I can get copies of what you're doing, if we have an ordinance or something that we wanna copy from someone else. Well, then it still needs to go through our legal counsel, I've, I've created documents and I said, okay, does this meet legal qualifications? And the response has always been back that there is some kind of a, a red line on that.
Okay. Well, okay, so like on November sixth, we contacted Christina, um, ooh, hold on, um.
And she was the one that's helping with the charter, right?
Yeah, so we, let's see, on, ooh, on November sixth, twenty twenty-four, we had three services, nope, one, two, three. Four, four calls to Alan and one, two, two to Christina, who happened to be one of the higher paid ones. And they were all, um, let's see, analyze further how charter provision may impact loan process and evaluate charter amendment history. So this was for the GATA loan, which we also contacted O-Such Consulting for the GATA loan, so we were.
So O-Such is just financial.
Okay, so then we allow us three point six hours there. Call with Sharon and Mayor Smith regarding charter amendment process, provide comments on charter amendments to Sharon. Um, the charter telephone conference with city staff and the mayor concerning GATA application. And then review proposed fee update schedule for legal compliance, draft proposed resolution adopting updated fees, draft advisory and correspondence to city manager pertaining to the same. Oh, draft amendment number one to the motocross lease agreement as requested by city manager. That's like six, four, three.
Six calls in the same day.
All in the same day. Review invoices and benefit records for officer who left, created itemized, that was three and a half hours.
Well, if you look at January, it's like, it was what, twenty-ish working days in a month, so that's a thousand dollars a day, so.
January?
And the sad part is, yeah, so.
Okay, wait, and then here's review correspondence concerning the status of city's GATA application, this is already in December, and I thought we discussed that, we decided we weren't gonna go with it. We're barely in February.
So the, um, the animal control and code enforcement, was that you making the phone calls or Brandon?
Brandon and, uh, Barbara.
And so we did have a question on the animal control, and, cause I talked to you a couple of months ago about this, we said, why are we, back in December, you know, we were saying Solomon's prices are getting.
Yeah.
Really high as well, they were between seven and nine thousand dollars each month, and so we said, hey, part of that was our policies, right, of how we had to do it, and so. I asked you to look into that to see, how can we have some cost savings where maybe staff could go in front of the judge? Um, and so I know, I talked to you just last week, thinking about trying to get that on the agenda for this week, the policy, but. Cause I told you I was concerned about the money every month that it's costing us, but you told me there probably wouldn't be much of a financial difference.
Not initially, and then we have scheduled, actually, we need to change that, um, we were gonna have a meeting with. With Brandon to discuss the.
The policy?
Um, the animal control policy. It was going to be, um, the week of the twenty-fourth, and that's when he is in, um, animal control conference. It's a one, once a year thing, so we need to have a work session for you to go over the changes that. Uh, between Solomon and Pierce Coleman worked on making.
But I heard it's not quite done yet, right?
It's ready, it's ready to go, you just have to have a work session, I have to. In saving our costs, Alan had said, you know, I could go through all this, he did all the burbage wise, but now I have to clean it up as far as pagination, numeration. And to make sure that it's.
So since you've seen it, there's not much cost savings now, is there a way for us to save money on animal control fees?
It's all online.
That's our big concern, or are we still gonna expect bills like this?
Well, we were, we had talked about moving this to Pierce Coleman and Alan said that. What, when they have, um, actual presence in the court, it's typical to do Zoom meetings, so.
It's still expensive, I mean, it's still an attorney involved, there's no way to get staff to go represent, and said, we changed the policy to have staff represent, Brandon.
I believe there is something in the changes that they made that animal control or another representative can go.
Problem is, every time we wait another month to get a work session, this and that, you know, we're hoping to get on our agenda sooner, so like I said, if it's costing us seven thousand to nine thousand a month. We puts it off two, three months, that's another eighteen thousand dollars, you know.
We can put it on the agenda, but you're gonna sit there going through the same thing, trying to go back and forth. What is the original and what are the changes, and Brandon's gonna be here answering all your questions, if you wanna do that during a council session, we can go ahead and set that up. Um, Alan thought it would be better, I, I agree with him, that if you go through it in a work session first and hash it all out. And then bring it to a council meeting, you'd be able to do that instead of postponing it because you didn't get to go through all of it.
So we spent sixty thousand so far, we don't know what cost savings we're gonna have going through Pierce Coleman, it's still from one attorney to another attorney versus one showing up in person versus Zoom, there's still gonna be quite a bit. So as we try to finish up the year then, if we still average, so that was seven months divided by sixty, what is that, Mike?
And I don't know what the cases are that, um, Solomon has, I requested that he give an update of all the cases that he has, that, so we can transfer him over to Pierce Coleman.
Sixty thousand divided by seven months, at night, thousand.
So we've got five months to go, so eight, five, times five, so potentially we've got four twenty-two thousand to go this year.
What, what else did you say is involved in this animal control or code enforcement for sixty thousand dollars, I, I don't get it. What's all involved in that?
Those are all the cases that animal control has been involved in, and some of those go back from April of last year and it has to do with. The way. It has to go to court because of the way our code is written right now. Brandon would be able to explain that better, but like, a dog bite, it's whatever the courts call it, you know, that, where somebody has to go to court. If we change our policy and just say, um, Brandon had mentioned to me that there was a case where, there was an out of towner, his dog bit somebody and. Our code said, you have to appear in court. So this guy either didn't show initially because he couldn't make it back and then it was postponed and we had somebody appearing in court when we found out that. So again, changing policy and making it change where a do- dog bite, if somebody just wants to pay the fine, they pay the fine and we're done with it. Instead of going to court three times, four times, or if the judge cancels it for whatever reason, those have been postponements.
So for now.
So why do we have to have a lawyer there, can we, like, you get a ticket, right?
That's a good question and that's what, that's what, why they're trying to change the policy.
Here, we'll go ahead and let her finish. Go ahead and finish.
So if you get a ticket, you go and it's not a lawyer that's there, it's the police that's there, the judge goes. You know what, the policeman goes, well, he's going sixty-five into fifty-five and here's the ticket and have him on radar, I mean, there's not a lawyer representing that policeman, it's just the policeman and you. In front of the judge, I mean, surely a dog bite's not more important than that. Right?
I, I understand what you're saying.
Would, have we used a lawyer before for dog bites and whatnot?
According to the way the policy is now, yeah, that's why you've had a lawyer going into court all this time.
No, he asked if we'd done it before.
Before, in other years, I mean, when we were at fifty-five? Yeah, that, and that's why we had Solomon do it, cause he's more local versus a different attorney coming from.
Well, I, I, I've got a question, have we thought about, being as you look at, I mean, this is huge, have we thought about coordinating with the county? And maybe just ending our animal control and letting them take it over, I know Heber Overgar, they don't have, they don't have their own animal control, the county runs it.
Is Heber incorporated?
It's cause Heber's, yeah, Heber's county, no, Heber's county, they're not considered, they're not like their town.
I don't know, I don't know.
They're incorporated.
Joe's a city you can just shoot dogs.
Okay.
Or like.
I'll remember that, so, um, I'm looking at this, so back January seventh, the animal control was already. This telephone conference with animal control officer concerning possible amendments to the city code to allow for greater flexibility in streamlining. In enforcement process and ways to recoup more of the city's expenses, analyze relevant code and statutory provisions and draft advisory correspondence to animal control officer. And then this next day, telephone conference with animal con- or city, animal control representative concerning enforcement process and possible amendments to city code. That was three and a half and half an hour, so four hours worth of that, what did they end up drafting? Do we see what they drafted that we could?
What day was that?
January seventh.
Well, I think it is a good idea that everything goes through you and not everybody's making these phone calls, so we're funneling it to one person.
To determine it.
And it really needs to be determined if we need to even speak with an attorney.
Well, we've.
Well, we've gone from sixty-five thousand dollars previous year to three hundred thousand this year.
And some of these code enforcement ones, if it's a code enforcement call, like on January ninth, exchange correspondence with code enforcement officer. Concerning updates and start in code case, if it's a code enforcement, could we not use the money or the, um. Finance the, from code enforcement, cause they, we have grants for that one that has to do with code enforcement, or you, we can't use those. To pay for their attorney's fees or legal fees if it's concerning code enforcement.
What grants are you talking about for code enforcement?
I just remember, uh, Barbara saying like, ha- they have so much money and whatever for grants for admin, for admin costs.
That's for CDBG, it's totally different, it has nothing to do with animal control or code enforcement per our property. And things like that, that's, that's housing, that's all split between admin and things like that. I did mention to you, Mayor, about, um, Solomon, Sterling Solomon, saying that he would be willing to reduce his fees. He did come in again this week and said that he'd reduce them again, and if possible, he is serious about. Continuing with the city that he's been working with us forever, he may even consider doing it pro bono. So you might want to see if you just wanna keep him for animal control, code enforcement. And just use Pierce Coleman for other administrative, um, codes, ordinances, resolutions. But he did come in again this week and reduce his fees again.
If we were going through Solomon for animal control, why didn't we call Solomon? To talk about the animal control officer concerning flexible city, to go like city code if it was, if he was our animal control attorney?
That's what I was thinking.
He's only the attorney to go to court, he doesn't do our codes.
So when did we let Solomon go, or have we? I think this week's is last week, so.
But in January, it was with Pierce Coleman.
We contacted, we sent the letter February sixth to Solomon.
But he finishes this week, so. So, yeah, he's still on.
So we were calling two attorneys for one animal control issue.
Because we were transferring over.
This was before, this was before, this was still in January before we went to, before we sent that letter to Solomon.
Right, but we had, I had discussions with the mayor about trying to consolidate all of our, our fees to one attorney.
So, just looking at some of these, and we are discussing with them for, I mean, we don't need to go through every one of them, but. When it's drafting, um, discussions, are we seeing any? Results with it, like medical centers on one of them, drafting policy, drafting code, uh. Code in, uh, let's see, code, what does it say, analyze relev- relevant code and statutory provisions, are we, I mean, and draft advisory correspondence. Are we seeing the, the results of this?
Well, we have all the codes that are gonna be changed in, um, animal control.
So that is done?
I'm sorry?
That is done?
It's done.
Not until we have our work session and we finally have, it's not done per se, so.
I mean, it's completed for you, ready, as soon as I format it, it's ready for you to review and say, yes, I like this.
So you're gonna format that, we don't need to, we don't need to contact the attorney to make sure it's okay to go forth, okay, okay.
All right, Councilwoman Pat had a question.
So I think, just kind of looking up at all of this, maybe doing all of these changes and updates to our charter. To our animal control policies, um, maybe we're just doing too much change at once. Um, I'm trying to figure out when we decided we were gonna update animal control code or policies. Or is that something that's under?
That's probably when I asked her to say, hey, we're spending too much, we're spending nine thousand dollars a month on animal control, our fees.
But who, who decided that we needed to update everything, an animal control policy?
Because everything was having to go through an attorney.
But, no, what I'm saying is, oh, why did we decide, hey, we need to update all of our animal control laws?
So Brandon had been working on that to, to alleviate. Well, he's made changes, loosening and then restricting.
But those changes, shouldn't they come to council, do they come to council and say, do you want to have these?
The appropriate verbiage is put in to make sure that we're in compliance with state statute and not. It still has to go through legal counsel for the verbiage on it.
So I have a question, I mean, we're sitting here discussing all this and we, we can see where we're at.
Right.
So what does, what would a, i- if we were to get attorney, uh. On a monthly fee, what would that cost us? Didn't you make a comment that somebody said they would agree to?
A flat fee.
A flat fee?
Well, it's not a flat fee per se, that would just be kind of a prorating, yeah, it's like a retainer. If, if our. So we're still billed the same, so we don't get unlimited services in that amount? It's just basically like, help us to create a budget, it's like, okay, we think you're spending, it's like APS will sit there and kinda give you an estimate. But at the end of the year, if you've gone over, you're still responsible for the hourly rates. Correct, I mean, so, yeah, you're still responsible for the hourly rates.
Well, I like the pro bono idea.
Well, he's not gonna do that forever, he's just offering to do it through the animal control, stuff like that, so.
But I would recommend you take him up on this offer to, to get everything settled. And then it's done, we'd, we'd have less cases once, one, the animal control codes are changed. Because then you're gonna have different violations or less violations, depending on, you know, what the issue is.
But we're assuming, we don't know for sure if something else can pop up, we know there's gonna be potentially something else. So I wanna go back real fast and say where we're at now, like you said, right now, we've spent three hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars. And, and forty-five cents, in the seven months. So if we save fifteen thousand a month, right now, for you said Pierce Coleman, cause you said it's probably higher than that thirteen thousand, to finish up the year, it'd be an additional seventy-five thousand. And then code enforcement, based off that average of eight thousand, cause whether it's Solomon doing or Pierce Coleman, it's still gonna be approximately eight thousand a month, that's another forty-two thousand. So potentially, there's still an additional hundred seventeen thousand dollars to finish up the year on the path we're going. So if we add our three thirty-nine, three nine four, I should make, come on, Pat, do this.
Four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
About three, three nine, three nine four, plus one, one, seven. Four hundred fifty-six thousand, three hundred ninety-four dollars, what we're on track to do, and like I said, we're already at three thirty-nine, we know there's gonna be at least, well. We haven't really gotten into, like, the Patel case, they're, like I said, they're charging us thirty thousand a month. I mean, that's, that's not even included in this price, by the way.
I see, that, there's Patel in here.
That one seventeen doesn't include any Patel cases, moving forward, so that's easily another hundred thousand. So we're on track to spend over half a million dollars on our fees.
So for thirty thousand dollars a month, what, what are we getting from those attorneys?
What are we getting from our attorneys from, um, Patel case?
I think that needs to be.
We can find out, we'll probably need to do an executive session and see, what, what are we getting for our money for the thirty thousand? But in the end.
No, I mean, if they say we're, they're drafting something, well, what are, are we, where's the draft at, have we, has it been presented yet?
We could, don't have to discuss the actual case itself, but we can discuss the, what it's costing us.
Just need to be careful.
Yeah, no, and I appreciate the warning, so, but we're literally on track to spend over five hundred thousand dollars. So we're saying tonight, part of that, so we go back to the agenda saying, hey, um. We've got, we're saying, hey, we need to update it, but, um, amend the budget to two hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. Well, that doesn't even get us to where we're at now, so we're still, is that two hundred fifty-seven thousand more, or to say the budget line item needs to be two fifty-seven? How is that read, Sharon, how, how are we reading that one?
So Rev has calculated that we need the two hundred and fifty-seven thousand to meet the end of our budget, he'd have to tell you how he came up with that figure.
To finish up, but that's to finish out the year, but we're already behind, so, right, cause we budgeted, let's say again.
That wouldn't finish out the year though.
No.
That, that, so that'd be in addition too, so if we made that movement, we would have. The total budget amendment would give us three hundred and sixty-two thousand in professional services by doing that.
What we need additionally, we need additional three hundred sixty-two thousand dollars out of our general budget to be put in administration?
No, we're, we already have a hundred and twenty-three budgeted, this would give us an additional two hundred and thirty-nine thousand in it. To give us a total of three sixty-two.
But we're saying that's not enough, that's not enough, he said four fifty-six, and that's before the Patel case, we're at four fifty-six.
But if you're talking, if you're adding Solomon in there, Solomon's in a different budget.
Oh, okay, he's out of animal control, okay.
He's out of a different budget, so if we, if we go to.
Forty-two, cause that's what he's left, so we're still at four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, that's without Patel. Is where we're already gonna be projected. No, so I took Solomon out, cause that was animal control, so I took out forty-two thousand, so that still leaves us with Pierce Coleman and the Patel suit. At four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars projected, and that does not include Patel, cause I don't know what that's gonna cost. That could be an extra twenty thousand a month, so we say another five, that could be another hundred thousand dollars easily if it's Patel.
And then we also have, uh, the li- budget line item, um.
And that doesn't include Brown and Brown either, if there's another.
Brown and Brown separate too.
So, right, okay, so right now, who's handling Patel case, is this Brandon, let, net, quote, here they are, so it's, um. This K Video Productions, that Brandon Milan, that's all Patel. So if you look at the back page right here, the Patel lawsuit at eighty-five thousand, that's like we said, that's your, um.
But here, and, so, there's the Patel right here for sh- uh, professional consulting services. Uh, this one starts with line item five zero four one, I'm assuming.
Which one are you on?
This is the, is this one the mostly Patel case?
Patel, okay.
There's also the O-Such Consulting, or some of that, the CPA, there's Patel, but then, this one with Pierce Coleman is also Patel.
Because Patel's piggyback, or Pierce Coleman is piggybacking on, to make sense, or a city attorney, they're making sure we're still protected. So we're kinda double dipping on attorneys on that, so I'd almost like to see Pierce Coleman take over Patel, cause if not, we have no control over this, Brandon. We started with them because they started with risk management, risk management gave us fifty thousand dollars to cover this case, we are now over that. And now everything over it is coming out of our pocket.
Who is the sell and associates, that's for Patel also. And that's thirty-one thousand, just February ninth. Um, so we're paying two attorneys, more than two firms, or paying at least two firms to cover the Patel case?
Why?
And the mediator.
Th- those guys are, they're just doing their research on, um, other, other codes and everything else. To back us on fighting that case.
But we're not asking for. Nothing I would like to say, let's get rid of the risk management one, now that we've overspent our fifty thousand, cause he's gonna keep going. Pierce Coleman's gonna be looking over their shoulder to make sure they're doing it right, and we're paying two attorneys, and we have no control over really Milan, he's kinda just spending whatever he wants, it looks like. I don't know.
Well, he's the one that was doing the depositions and everything. So mid-March, my understanding is when, when we have the mediation meeting. Mid-March, after that, Pierce Coleman should be able to take over everything on that. Um, Justin's out of the office this week, and Ellen was gonna talk to him about that.
Can we call someone else other than Ellen, that's a little bit less per hour?
You guys made the contract, and my understanding, my understanding of the con- the contacts were, Justin is the principal, Alan was the other one. I know those are the only two I've dealt with when I was introduced to them.
Well, look at, look at this main page again, the, the longer one, if you look at February ninth, that selling associates, thirty-one thousand, five hundred eighty-eight. And then you go down to the Doyle firm at twenty-six thousand, nine seventy-three, so that is fifty-seven thousand dollars, fifty-eight thousand dollars.
The Patel case also.
Yeah, so that's fifty-eight thousand just for February. So I'm saying, they could cost us an extra fifty thou- so we may get to mid-March, we may or may not, we're hoping mediation goes well, right? But if it doesn't, that's potentially another fifty thousand that we don't even account for yet, or Brown and Brown. So we are literally talking over five hundred thousand dollars in attorney fees, and that has got to stop somehow, I'm not sure how. But, like you said, we've got streets, as an example, the other day, um, where my husband was working, there was some street guys out there. Working with shovels trying to fix a repair, and he's like, hey, where's your healthy, and I'm like, oh, it's broken. And so my husband loaned them his healthy to break it up, so these guys didn't do it by shovels, later on, he's, they were trying to do something else, he's like, well, where's this tool, they're like, it's broken now. It'd been five thousand dollars worth of equipment, but instead we're having guys on shovels, five thousand dollars, we're throwing money out left and right for attorney fees. Where our staff is, doesn't have the right tools to be efficient, our priorities are all screwed up here somehow.
Wait, wow, long story, we just gotta get control of it, we're.
He's not even an attorney.
We, we've gotta have one firm handling this and, this is crazy.
Do you have any recommendations from staff?
The Brandon Mylum is.
He's Patel.
Yeah, but he's a paraprofessional, and he's not even an attorney.
Well.
Well, I'm, I'm.
I, I would recommend taking Sterling Solomon up on his offer, either his half reduced rate or pro bono. For X number of period that, you know, he'd be willing to work it. At least that will cut our cost and, because Pierce Coleman is more, that would at least cut some costs there. He can continue with the cases that he has, and then we reinvestigate.
That was our lowest one, forty-two thousand, so we cut that in half, that's twenty thousand, we're still hundreds of thousands potentially moving forward, so that's a great suggestion, we will take that. What other suggestions you have for Pierce Coleman and our Patel case?
I think Patel, we don't really have control over that, and I have not been involved in that Patel case at all. Um, that was pre me, and I haven't even been involved in that at all up until March. When I know he's gonna wanna get you involved, Randy involved, me as just sitting there, together information.
If, if we did get one attorney handling everything, are we talking about going back with Solomon, or are we staying, saying Pierce Coleman?
I think you need to stay Pierce Coleman because they have attorneys that can cover other issues like land use issues. I don't believe that that is, um, from Solomon's, under his purview. But we have a bigger, um, access to a larger law firm with Pierce Coleman.
But Pierce Coleman is the one that's costing us.
But we co- but we run every single thing.
That's what it was last month, in January, I don't know when he's been in February, we'll find out in a week.
You'll find out what in a week?
What our February Pierce Coleman was, we know January was twenty-two thousand.
Twenty-two thousand in January.
Cause we were hoping, you know, we discussed it back in November, December, we knew the bills were getting higher, and they're like, hey, it'll slow down a little bit, and then for some reason, this month it almost doubled. It was like, I thought we were starting to slow down, but I don't know why it nearly doubled in a month.
So, so let me ask you something, so when did you start the new procedure about everything having to go through you, in other words?
We haven't, we haven't.
Oh, we ain't.
When are we gonna start it?
We can start it immediately.
I would say so.
I think that's the consensus of the council.
I'm, I mean, we, we can't keep going the way we're going, it, and that way you would be responsible for the, the calls. I mean, you would be deciding, okay, do we really need to do this, or we don't need to do it, but it, the.
I do wanna say that, I don't know how you've done it in the past, but from what I've seen, my perspective in reviewing things. Perhaps in the past, you have not gone through legal counsel when you should've, to keep us out of trouble. And we're trying to make sure that we are dotting our i's and crossing our t's, to make sure that we know what we should be doing. And I think this learning curve in processing some things through attorneys now, whoever it is. Um, now we know, again, um, let's just use code enforcement. Code enforcement hasn't been, hadn't been adhered to on a regular basis. Now they are doing it, they've got GoGov, they're monitoring everything, they're sending out their letters. And the verbiage that is used, and the timeframes that are used, and then the follow-up, and when do we need to send it to court? To make sure that we can recoup our money on it, I think those fees will be reduced. Once we get a regular process going, knowing, okay, this is similar to this that I worked on last month, I know I don't have to go through our attorney for this. Do you know what I'm saying?
I, I do, but, um, I'm wondering what the deadline is on all this, on when we're gonna start doing this kind of stuff, because.
I mean, we've started, like I said, I've sent contracts, I've created. I mean, we've started, like I said, I've sent contracts, I've created a contract, and I passed it through Alan and said, is this good to go? I thought it was, it had all the right processes or steps that I thought, and it was.
But yet our prices went up last month.
And it was redlined, because, no, this needs to be changed, and again, he's looking out for the city to make sure that we've got the right verbiage. Costs less for him to do a maybe five-minute redline than creating a whole document, so we are saving. But certain things still need to go through, as far as contracts, ordinances, and resolutions, liens through courts.
I think we get carried away though, and I, I just, this lease agreement I'm familiar with, a one dollar, it had to go back to the attorney three times. I mean, that was crazy, it's just a lease agreement. But everything we did, well, we, we have to take that back to the attorney, and I'm thinking, I don't understand that, but every little word change.
We'll take the, um, the Roadrunner LLC. We initially had what we thought they were gonna do a lease, a purchase option. Now we're going back and they're saying, well, no, we don't like all this stuff, because our city attorney was looking out for the city. Now they want to just buy outright, so now we're looking at another contract arrangement with them.
And that's my point, the prices aren't necessarily gonna go down, so, what do we do?
Well, I, obviously we can't go back to the past, so going forward, the only, I mean, it's gonna put a lot of pressure on. All you, cause you're gonna have to determine, does this go to the attorney, does it not? But, I mean, within good faith, to hopefully avoid. Repeated or repetitive calls to the attorney for similar situations.
But you feel like so far, everything's been justified, correct, all the calls from the system?
Yes. And again, I really believe that they will be going down, because now we know, I have this similar situation, I know, or we've already got the verbiage, this is. This is our process now.
Who's going, who determines that, like, the whoever's call, like us, like as a city? Or the attorney's office, like, oh, we already know this, we've done this before, or it's gonna be the city's?
No, we can say that, and, and I'll just use code enforcement, because it's, it's the same thing, you're, you're citing them for, you know, X. So, if we're signing them for X all the time, we know that this is the same process, same process.
Cause I do remember when we discussed the Star Inn, and moving forward litigation, we asked if we had it in the budget to do so. And at the time, we did, well now, it doesn't, obviously, we don't.
That's a problem, all these attorney fees are gonna take away from all the other services and projects we want.
Yeah, all the other things that we wanna get done.
So, yeah, that's.
And that's the thing, so we're literally gonna have to go tell the citizens, I'm sorry, but we've got some great contracts now.
So, in our area.
Well, those contracts will always keep us out of litigation.
So, in our area, city attorneys make between a hundred and sixteen to a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year.
I think we should hire one of them.
A local.
If we had a local, you mean like if we hired a local city attorney?
Our own city attorney.
Our own city attorney.
Our own city attorney makes in that. I'm, I'm looking Gallup, Winslow, Snowflake, that's how much a city attorney makes.
So is this a city attorney that would cover, like?
That's one that would have an office in there, and would do whatever.
Yeah, it would be here. So it's not gonna be an attorney that we have to run through contracts for, or it's gonna be the same.
No. The bill is for an hour, we'll give him a, a salary or her a salary.
Yeah, but I don't think that lawyer could handle the Patel case.
Why not?
I, that, each lawyer has different.
You'd have to have a cell attorney, well, I mean, they'd all be the same.
I don't know.
He would, he would know what to, who to reach out to.
Well, then you paid another lawyer.
Yeah, but, I, I mean, our, our city manager is unsure of, and everyone else is, is unsure of the verbiage and the, the law, the legal terms. And so they're blindly reaching out. And when we have a, if you have a city attorney, they already know who to reach out, when to, they know their capacity.
Cause even at five, we're spending five hundred thousand dollars this year on attorney, so we did a hundred and fifty thousand here.
And they probably know the verbiage.
And they have to come to us.
Take us off fifty thousand to go consult with somebody else at two hundred thousand dollars, and we're still saving three hundred thousand dollars.
Still way money ahead.
Mm-hmm, I agree, so, did you have a comment first, I'll, once.
I think the city attorney is a good idea, because, um, not only does it put more of a cap on it, but they, they will also have. Um, kind of the fear of, that they have to give an account to us, since then, because we've hired them.
Their salaries, they're right there.
I mean, how often is a city attorney sat with us here in council, maybe? In the six years I've been on council, maybe three times. You know, it would be nice if we had our own.
Yeah.
Reported to the city manager, we have a question, he's just crossed the hall.
I, I may not like the idea.
Yeah.
If, or, if we could find one, but.
Well, we definitely can't do that right now, because we have, we can't do it within our budget, maybe within our next, when we do budget travel.
We're still gonna spend how much this year?
We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna spend it salary for.
We're still gonna spend at least a hundred and seventy thousand, that's before Patel, to finish out the year.
So maybe we can.
So that covers you right there, just in five months, it's gonna cost us a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, so.
And that's what the city attorney in, in, uh, Gallup makes. For what we spent for five, five months.
Yes.
So, can I ask you a question, who was your city attorney before you hired Pierce Coleman, and why did you hire Pierce Coleman? I just throw that out, because I'm not, I'm not privy to the history of.
Randy can probably answer that.
It was Dixon and Wright.
You saw one of them on here.
I was the same, we still have them.
They were just finishing up.
Oh, I see, I saw, uh, one for Dixon.
Yeah, there was like a hundred bucks.
Yeah, that was the one where they did that audit report.
And how'd they do, Randy?
No, no, I see it, there was a different one for Dixon.
So why did you get rid of them?
They were taking forever.
Yeah, that, uh, that, um, when we were posting our agendas, or if we had. Any, any kind of code enforcement things, that it, they were taking forever to get back to us. There were several items that Lisa would send to get.
Like, if, after we do an ordinance, I have to have the attorney sign it, and sometimes it would take up to two months before I would get it back from him.
So it just wasn't a good responsive situation.
So then how did Pierce Coleman come into the picture, why wasn't a local lawyer selected, like, like you were saying?
I'm thinking because we've never gone over budget on attorney fees.
Yeah.
That's what I'm thinking it is.
I mean, yeah, that, I mean.
We were seventy thousand, and now we're.
Three hundred plus.
Five hundred, really? We're into be funny.
No.
But it's also, we've been trying to update everything, and to update everything, it takes.
Half a million dollars worth of updates.
I guess.
Yeah, why can't we just, why can't we just update certain things, like, you know, the fee thing with the animal control, so they doesn't go to the court? Why can't we just fix certain ones that are affecting us, right now, and then gradually fix the rest?
And that's, I think, so the same thing, right, why are we trying to do it all at once here?
I think what she's saying is right now, all of them are affecting us right now, that's why, it's high, that's why.
And I don't see an end, right, we're still in the middle of.
Well, there'll be an end, because presumably we'll have one.
Run out of money.
I mean, that's where your end will come.
And that's the thing, so back at our strategic planning session, we said, hey, from an administrator side, we need a spending freeze on, on all unnecessary expenditures at this point moving forward, because. We knew these were getting high, and then I got this month's bill and nearly had another heart attack, how you feeling, how you feeling? Just kidding.
I'm glad I didn't feel that way.
Anyways.
Yeah, and, and, so, that's, that confused me also, when we said, okay, we need to freeze all this, and then all of a sudden it's. Twenty-two thousand more, and I'm like, and, and it's gonna be more, because you don't have January's yet. Or Feb, February's.
February, yeah. Well, one of, one of them is going to what, litigation, you said, so hopefully that.
Well, it's going to mediation, that doesn't matter, we're hoping for a resolve, that doesn't mean you're gonna get it, right, so.
It might not go in our favor.
Yeah, that's true, we may end up having to pay out, or settle, or whatever, and I don't know.
Okay, now let me ask you a question, i- i- it's all well and good for us to sit here and say, okay, we need to freeze everything, well, you can't, because. How, how are you gonna freeze it, you're just gonna tell them the, the lawyers are finding this, okay?
We could probably at least freeze some policies, right?
So what we did, Randy actually did put out a record of communication to everyone, all the department head, saying, unless it's absolutely necessary. You know, unnecessary, we're, we're freezing everything, but we still have to. Run the business, we need to run the city, so, I don't know, a couple of little things that, that came up, everybody's going, well, can I spend this money, well. Yes, you need it, you know, for the streets department to get something done, whatever, you can do that. But it's those major things, or those things that can't wait till the next budget, or we figure out where we're gonna get the money from, that's all been cut, so they're not.
So, with that, moving forward, so I know you guys were coming with some recommendations. On where to get at least that two hundred thousand, I feel like we need to find at least another hundred thousand, potentially two hundred thousand.
We, we have that in code enforcement on the li- bottom line.
Which is good, but I hate spending on that, but if we have to, we have to, to get things under control.
And these are just the numbers now, that I was recommending, if we continue to find savings.
But here's my concern. So my concern is, in the agenda, it says, from the library, golf course, animal control, so we said golf course, I know, before you talked about the sand pro. We just got, you know, a month ago, we said, hey, our priority's gonna be the clubhouse, is that gonna affect the clubhouse, that was one of the cuts. But I don't feel like you guys were talking when we, we expressed our concern to. Sharon, at our strategic planning session, we said, hey, the clubhouse is gonna be important, and the next week, you came and said, hey, let's cut golf course, I feel like. Probably that wasn't communicated, that was gonna be a priority, are we still gonna be able to do the golf course clubhouse?
Well, that, that was to, we, twenty of that was budgeted for the clubhouse.
But that can go in next year's budget.
But that's only twenty thousand, we know the clubhouse is gonna be more than that, so.
And fifteen was for the sand pro.
Cause I think we're gonna take funds, potentially from lodgers for tourism.
That was, it was, I mean, the lodgers, that we were gonna use for the golf course.
Yeah, we could, we can.
So we're still not touching that, so it's good, so basically, we're hurt, we're gonna be taken from code enforcement budget.
The sand pro.
We've already taken it from the senior center, right?
Well, you were talking, you were talking about not take, not getting a vehicle for animal control too, right?
Yeah.
So all vehicles are kind of on hold.
But all those things that we took can go into next year's budget, so.
I know, it just puts us behind, and as the council, it just makes me sad.
I don't feel comfortable with that, Sharon, the way everything's going, and the way all these attorneys out there, it's gonna be damn hard to, to say what we can.
So I have another solution, we have Morton Capital, that we've put this nine million dollars into. All of our CDs are in two hundred and fifty thousand increments, I've been keeping them three to six months. And not, I think the longest one we had was eighteen months, uh, we do have a CD coming due the eleventh of March. But we don't have to roll over, there's two hundred and fifty thousand there, the next one is at the end of April, we have another.
All right, I'm gonna stop you right there for a second, just to get consensus, for me, I don't feel, I don't wanna take our investment, that's gonna go into our capital projects. For our streets and our trails and things like that, we need to get control of the council, not just say, okay, we're gonna take that investment money and do something, it's like, no, we gotta get this under control. Versus saying, we're gonna take it from there, um, for one, we can't add to our budget anyways. And so, if we have money in code enforcement, cause I know, we set aside a big chunk, because code enforcement was important to this council, right? Downtown thing, I think we had three hundred thousand for it.
I feel good taking from code enforcement, because a lot of this is code enforcement related.
Yeah, and I agree.
And, and that's already in budget, and we have a short list in that line item already.
So, for, to, to get us through this year, let's do that, but our directive to staff is we've got to get this under control, we cannot spend. Four hundred thousand, five hundred thousand dollars on attorney fees, am I? Have we's consensus?
Do your due diligence.
We've gotta figure out a plan to, and I think a lot of us say, but it's fine, let's look at, see the attorney, if these bills are gonna keep going up, if it's gonna take us this much to make sure we're legal and trying to protect us. Then we invest in that hundred and seventeen, hundred and twenty thousand dollar staff member, and like we said, we understand there're gonna be some cases that they still have to go, but. If we can keep it around two hundred thousand for everything, every, I think that's something we can swallow, right, keeping us legal.
Well, I still don't like that, when the previous year's budget was sixty, well, I mean, we spent sixty-five thousand.
Well, I'm either.
I, I agree. But they hadn't revised anything.
Huh?
And revised.
But guess what, we haven't even touched personnel policies and all the other codes. When you start hitting all those codes, there's a hundred codes, how many codes do we have, do we have any idea?
How many codes are in the code book, well, we have eight, how many chapters?
A chapter, how many code?
Eight chapters, and there's, I don't know, I would, I'm not prepared.
No, I know, I'm just, just guessing, but.
I would say one.
At least a hundred, at least a hundred codes, so over a hundred codes, and we're only talking a few codes, and it's costing us this much, so I don't think. Saying we're ever gonna get caught up on the legal and the codes, cause we're gonna wanna update all of them if it's been years, and so. I don't, I agree, I agree with Councilman Black, I hate even spending that much, we can keep it to a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred thousand, it's like. There are so many more important things out there, yes, contracts are important to make sure it's legal and protected. But to what, to what end, what cost, right, to the cost of our citizens, we have a fiduciary duty as a council to make sure we're spending their tax money wisely, and so.
Yeah, if we could put even sort of a cap on it, then, then they don't think, oh, well, we can spend, you know, we can do all these things and keep taking away.
So Sharon.
We can't take money out of savings to keep paying for stuff that, that we're doing wrong, and I feel like we're doing things wrong, we need to get a hold of. We need to get control of it and go forward.
I mean, this is money we could have skipped on our count.
Exactly, exactly.
To make our citizens happy.
What could we have done with three hundred thousand dollars?
A lot.
Exactly, so Sharon, you said that you have not been involved with the Patel case this whole time, so, we would like to see you more involved, to see if you can get control of that. Do we wanna, see, I recommend that we.
So the only.
Hold one second, I'd like to recommend that we have, like I said, one attorney, right, so we get rid of. The Brandon's group and all that they're doing, and put it all under Pierce Coleman, just to start consolidating, are we in a consensus with that?
Well, Pierce Coleman would have to agree to that also.
Yeah, they would, but they're already overseeing it, we're being double dipped anyways, so they're already aware of it, they sat through my deposition.
Yeah.
Right, so we're, yeah, he was on the call making sure, he wasn't advising me.
Yeah, because the Doyle firm is the Brandon guy, which is also the K Video, I mean, all those were underneath the, the Doyle Associates.
Exactly, and that was fifty thousand dollars last month, so we gotta get control over Patel case, so we'd like you to be more involved with the Patel case. And then, we wanna see that, all that information taken over to Pierce Coleman, if that's doable with Pierce Coleman, so if you can report back to us on that. Am I correct, are, are we in a consensus?
I think that's a really good idea.
I agree.
Okay, cause we've got a, at least Pierce Coleman, I, I believe, you know, we know them, we work with them, they understand that budgets are important, yes, Sharon?
So, when I say I haven't been involved, I've been getting the updated emails that Alan's been getting. But, I was not here during the Patel case, so I've not been deposed, I have not been involved in it, because I know nothing about the Patel case. Except the general summary.
We're just asking you to be aware of the finances and the cost of everything.
And I believe that that is really out of our control, because the lawyers are saying, this person has to be deposed, they have to have this person coming in and doing this, and they're inviting this person for a deposition, and. Opposing counsel deposes people, this council deposes people, it's like, that is the process, and we have no control over that. So, I can't say that, you know, we can, we can rein in those costs, um, again, mid-March, when they have the mediation meeting. That they're hoping for, again, um, Alan will talk to Justin when he gets back in the office, they will take over that. But then there's gonna be the, I've gotta work with this lawyer to get caught up on that, so you're still gonna have those legal fees, I can't say, no, just. Take your files and don't talk to each other, what?
Well, if Pierce Coleman's already overseeing the Patel case.
So he'll, he'll, he's known more, but he wasn't in the initial process with Patel?
But he's caught up enough, I mean, yeah, well, he's.
Well, okay, let me ask you this, then, we're all sitting here trying to figure out a way around this, what is your suggestion?
Don't get any, don't get any, any more litigation.
I, so.
Yes.
Why, so, how about we kinda not call the attorney for anything that we need, like that is subcurrent, unless it's something. That's like an emergency situation, like if it's Patel, understand, if it's, um, like, but not like, hold off on creating any policies, just hold off on doing any charter review calls. Hold off on, uh, I don't know, contract, unless it's a hard thing, it's already like the Roadrunner case, we're already, or Roadrunner.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's already going forth, but. Is it an emergency time sensitive that it has to be done right now, or can that wait maybe a week or two to kinda. Slow down on the calls, because every single call is gonna cost us, like, maybe hold off on.
I mean, we can monitor it more, but I don't feel that we're just picking up a phone call just to pick up the phone.
I mean, cause I mean, I look at this, okay, so, let's just go to the very last one that we have, January thirty-first. Revised complex lease agreement with option to purchase, draft purchase agreement to include as exhibit, four hours and, or four point two hours. Um, the same day, review updates of Patel litigation and exchange, okay, well, let's just say that one, cause that's what I'll have to. Analyze legal considerations pertaining to the provision of mails at council meetings, draft advisory correspondence to client representatives. Could that have waited, draft proposed executive session language for upcoming council meeting exchange, correspondence concerning charter revisions, executive session, could that have waited? Work on obtaining ownership records from municipal airport, like, some of these, could, some of these have waited, or just got it all in one email, instead of sending. Multiple emails on the same day? Um.
Are those emails or phone calls?
Well, the, some of these were emails, telephone call with Sharon to discuss questions related to GSE. Could that have, like, if it can wait. If it's time sensitive, understandable, but if it can wait for something. if it's time sensitive, understandable, but if it can wait for something that maybe we could put off for.
Do you feel like that's doable?
Is that possible?
Is that realistic?
That's fine.
Is it realistic? I'm asking us, do you feel like?
I mean, if we're talking contracts, those can't wait.
Yeah.
Depends on how, how, how quickly do you wanna contract it go through or not? I mean, there are some things where I send something and I don't get anything for a month or two.
Cause they could be working on it for six hours.
Well, how many contracts were we actually looking? That's all I hear. We're redoing contract. I mean, what do we got going on? This is a small town. How many contracts we got, we're messing with right now?
Uh, I know those.
How many contracts do you feel like we're doing right now?
Right now? We just have the Roadrunner.
What exactly is that?
That's the drag, the drag. So just basically the Roadrunner at this point is our only contract?
I think so.
That's what I'm saying. We can't have that many. And all I hear is, well, we're redoing contracts. Well, things were done wrong in the past. Now we're having to straighten them all out. And I'm thinking, what? What are we talking about? I mean.
All right.
Well, well, we also will. I don't think we have to go to legal on that. We're still waiting on NPC on that land thing, but that's in there all court and waiting for things. I think we've had everything that went through legal on that already. Um, I know we have the Petrocom agreement that was still out there that we've been negotiating. And they have new management on that that I'll be meeting with this week or next week, next week, I think.
I just felt it. We need to, however you guys can cut back on costs, we need to cut back on costs.
Sure.
Because we're not.
We are in that, we are in a hiring freeze also, right?
Are we on a hiring freeze?
We need to be.
We don't have any other. We're on a breathing freeze.
You said there was one that was posted.
We have the one admin position, we have one admin position and um, we put that on hold until this admin person at least gets up to speed.
That's open.
Uh, I, can we just hold off on that completely until the next budget year?
I think that is.
Is there a consensus we wanna hold off on a, we agree in a hiring freeze for everybody?
Well, we need to. Yeah, we need to.
For now, till we get this under control?
That's the only, that's the only position.
Okay, and we're asking, yeah, so.
And if somebody were to quit or prior.
So I know you like that directive, so we're given that directive.
But if someone were to, between now and June thirtieth, um, if somebody were to quit or and be terminated, like, we will not fill that position until the next fiscal year, until we can get out of this situation. Is that?
Well, that, I don't wanna be short-staffed on staff on like streets or something.
Not, I mean, but we're not gonna, but we're not gonna lose twenty people in the next.
No, but.
How about this? If we do lose somebody, can you bring it to council and that's, let's check our, where we're at on our budget?
Prior to. Prior to posting.
We're not gonna lose anybody. We're just not, I like it where they are. I hope you're right.
I hope so. But I hope we can get a control on this, so we can start doing stuff in our city, is what we need to be doing.
I don't know, we've already lost so many people in that, in that. But is that something that could be?
So yeah, so as a consensus, we're saying we'd like to see a hiring freeze as part of this budget amendment.
Even if, that doesn't mean doing open positions, but if.
Yeah, if they fire. So I just asked her to say, hey, if somebody like Sam Streets, that's not a department head anyways, they do, come back to us as a council, let's make sure we're good on our budget at that point, that we can afford that other person. Are we good with that?
Yeah.
So did you have a comment?
Um, well, I'm trying to think how to put it. Um, there's, like I said, I think we should do, have her be mainly, have going everything through her. Um, and, um, that maybe we could be, all be on like a, um, a phone thing together. If she has any sort of questions, that she could just text us all.
Chuck, we can't do that for public meetings. So we can't communicate, yeah. So unfortunately, four of us can't be together on any kind of conversation, even if it's just one by, she can't even
Open meeting. Okay, I got you.
Call us one by one and ask. That's called polling.
But maybe she could say that, maybe if she just said, well, I need to check that first.
If we need us, so.
So even, so that they realize that there, there have to be, they can't just go and just, oh, wow, we got, we can just keep making them spend all this money on all these things when, so they, they realize that there's some sort of a cap. You know what I'm saying?
Well, we realize there's, she realizes there's a cap.
Yeah, well, I know, and I'm not saying that, that you don't think that.
The departments, you mean?
I, well, like, like when the, um, makes everything go through you, where they have to let you know what's going on with all the cases and so forth, right? With that, you say, yeah, I need to.
Are we talking legal? I'm sorry, we're.
That, that's.
Yeah.
Legal, okay.
That they at least feel that they have to get an okay first, because right now it seems like they, they, they could just do whatever. And all of a sudden, we get a twenty-two thousand dollar bill.
Well, we've established that, right?
Yeah. So moving forward, yeah. So let me summarize and you guys clarify this. So moving forward, starting tomorrow, all communication will go through the city managers directly to the attorneys. And then there's gonna be a hiring freeze and a spending freeze for any non-necessary, non-emergency purchases.
Which is already like so.
So, and we're gonna ask administration to find any of the cost savings they can. So is that summarize it? All right, are we gonna, so back to the actual amendment of the budget, are we gonna?
Take them code enforcement.
So, so, um, on this, on number A, I don't see code enforcement on here at this point, but that's where you're saying it'll come from?
It's already in administration, so we don't go over bottom line, cause that'll.
So are we gonna approve that two hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred nine dollars from the library golf course, animal control, fire and senior center departments for the payment of additional retirement funds?
Can you, can you go over again, um, how much you're taking from, from each of those? So there was the library, the golf course.
So the library, we are recommending to pull seven thousand five hundred dollars from their budget. The golf course is thirty-five thousand. The animal control is forty thousand. The fire department is a hundred and twenty thousand. And then fleet, and the senior center ends up being forty-one thousand five hundred forty-one.
And the fire department was a savings from, from the fire truck, so it's not really something that was set for an expenditure, any particular expenditure. It was a savings.
And then the difference, cause like we said, that two hundred and thirty, two hundred fifty-seven thousand wasn't enough, so the rest will come out of code enforcement, correct?
Yes.
So how's that?
Well, it'll be at the bo, it'll just be in the bottom line of admin.
Okay, so for the fire department, we had that budgeted for?
We budgeted a fire truck for seven hundred thousand and we only spent five eighty or something like that.
Okay, so we had a rollover, you said?
This just really makes me sad that we have to actually do this. That we've gone over budget that much that we have to take away from all these other entities in our community.
In such a short amount of time, too. Okay, all right, so I will open the floor for a motion.
One more, one more question.
Oh, go ahead.
And then next budget year, we'll be able to put this money back.
That'll be the plan.
Except for the fire truck money because.
Because that was rollover. But they could have used that for something else.
Yeah.
That was a savings from the fire truck. It was, it was.
Oh, I'm sure they would have found money.
But I mean.
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure they had supplies if they would've done. So yes, and they're all, all these guys are making a sacrifice for this.
Yeah, I was gonna say, because even though we're taking from the, like, from, well, borrowing from the fire department.
We're taking.
We can definitely, we can still put that money back in there because, I mean.
Depends on if our, our attorney fees keep going up, next year we're gonna have to budget more, and so we'll still have to take a cut.
Yeah, we won't have a duty fee. Cause I would like, I'd feel better knowing that it will be reimbursed to these departments to get us past these attorney's fees.
And I've met with most of the departments for their budgets and what their needs are. I don't think chief, uh, fire chief had put a request in for that amount, that extra amount of money, but we still talking Randy, we can put it back in.
I mean, but. Okay, I was saying, because I mean.
However.
You would get find, they could find it, use, utilize it period.
So let me put a kink in everybody's thoughts here too. So there is right now being fought down at the legislative level. Uh, an elimination of the food tax bill.
Oh, yeah.
If that goes into play, we're gonna lose six hundred thousand dollars next year. So take that into account with everything else, we might be, have a six hundred thousand dollar shortage just because of that. We're fighting it. There's fifty-three of us mayors that have signed statements saying we oppose it. They're still fighting it. I've been getting, you know, for our last two weeks, we've got all the mayors trying to fight it, but.
Last year, a couple of years ago.
Yeah, the, the governor vetoed it down, but it's still back in again this year. So keep that in mind. So. All right, I will go ahead and open up the floor for a motion for an amendment. I know. Nobody wants to be the one that takes the hit. Anybody wanna make a motion?
No. A motion to what?
Amend. So to do this one, to amend it, to take the funding from these accounts to put towards the, these administration, um.
Now, the golf, the golf course for thirty-five thousand dollars. So you're basically saying, okay, right, as of right now, we cannot do the clubhouse.
No, we can't.
Well, we could. We, we decided to tr, uh, take that as a lodgers, as a tourism.
So what are they losing for thirty-five? You said a sand pro.
A sand pro.
And twenty thousand for the, that I have budgeted for the clubhouse.
I mean, all, all year long, we've talked about improving how we're gonna improve Holbrook and what we're doing now is same, well, we can't do that anymore, cause we're gonna buy some lawyers' time.
Let's see what everybody's madish about right now, though, is all the lawyer fees.
Well, well, here's the thing. If you, I mean, somebody's gotta make the motion to approve this. I mean, it doesn't do any good to sit here and say we're not going to. I, I, you have to approve it.
Thank you. We got a motion.
Okay, I was just gonna say, I'll do it, you know. Don't, not happy, but I'll do it.
Do it.
Yeah, so.
So we got a motion and all second, we have a second. So we have a further discussion?
Well, well, here's the thing. Okay, we just approved the amount they're over now. We already know that in the next few months, they're gonna be over, over the amount we're approving right now.
And they said they'll take it from code enforcement? We got money in code enforcement, but the rest will come from code enforcement. I know, we're, I think we're all sick to our stomach.
Why couldn't we just take that money from code enforcement?
Because we're gonna need it for later on.
It's already in administrative. Then that way, if it's, if we come over again, then we can.
So you've already spoken to all these departments at this point. We can do an amendment later and to give back. So say a library comes back and said, hey, you know, I could really use this money. Then maybe we can take it from code enforcement over if there's extra. So, yes.
So I've spoken to all the departments, getting their approval before we presented to you and everybody was fine with it, as long as they get it back in their budget, which we said, from Randy and I talked, we'd be able to do next budget.
We're not sure we can, not the budget, uh, the dreams.
You just said that you talked to most of the departments.
No, I talked to all of the department. I talked to most of the departments about their budget for twenty-five, twenty-six, and want to see who I have.
Well, here, here's a question for, for you and Randy both. Okay, we, we set a budget last year, right? Um, on administration and everything else. We set the budget at what, Randy? And now all of a sudden, did, what, what is so unexpected that got up to five hundred thousand dollars?
Patel. It was, Patel was only a hundred thousand.
And the code, the changing of the codes, everything that they're trying to change now, having to ask the attorneys, is made it do that. But we, I think we tried to do too much at one time.
No, you spent eighty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-three dollars just on the Patel case.
And we've added people.
Well, that wasn't that, I mean.
The, but adding people has nothing to do with it because salaries aren't over. The line item in salaries is not over. It's your consultation and, what's that word now? Yeah, professional and consulting services. That's what got you over your budget.
So, who's the report of the attorneys for Patel case?
I'm sorry.
Do they report to you? No, apparently not.
She said she hadn't been.
So I mean, so who, who cares for them to do more research? Surely they're representing somebody on our behalf.
She said we didn't have any control over that.
We gotta have control. Who's paying them? We're paying them.
I mean, cause I had, I had an attorney and I'm.
Well, I know, I'm just saying.
Well, I'm not a lawyer to say, you know, well, no, you don't have to have that meeting or you don't need to research it. You should have somebody on your, in your law firm that knows that.
But can they at least call you and say, hey, FYI, I need to reach out to this firm because I need to have this, this and this. And FYI, it may cost thirty thousand.
Can we have you do this? Can you call Brandon or an, anybody associated with us and say, it's a council directive, we've got to save some money. Can you and your firm save us money? Well, we'll do it by Pearson Coleman, but then tell Pierce Coleman, we've gotta save some money on this, any cost saving. But we've gotta direct them to say, we are concerned about this budget and you do not have free reign to do whatever you want.
Yeah.
I, I think, I think the thing needs to come down is Sharon has got to get involved with it because lawyers, being lawyers, I mean, good grief, they'll have a lunch, you know what I mean? Well, somebody's got to have control.
They did. They went to Colonel Mustard's for.
Yeah, Arby's, I know. I'll, I got your lunch. Okay, I'll provide your lunch, but you don't have to go, we don't pay.
Nikita done it by Zoom, right?
Okay, um.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
And then we might have to discuss it more.
We may, we can do another amendment if we need to, yep. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And I could say who's unhappy with this, but we, we get it, we're all unhappy with it. So, but a motion passed. So thank you, Mr. Sullivan, for helping us find that additional funding to, to cover those expenses, so. All right. Moving on, we had item B, discussion, possible action on possible adjustments to the twenty-four, twenty-five budget priorities. Um, so based on that, do we need to go back to those priorities? We just agreed. I don't think there was really too much on, um, budget-wise that we needed.
What we're taking away from those.
So are we good tabling now? And it was just a discussion, so, all right.
I think we're all mad.
Yeah, I agree.
I think we need to put three.
All right. Uh, do I have a motion to table that one?
So.
I'd make a motion to table.
Second.
Thank you. So.
Is that thirteen B?
Yes.
Second, second.
I second it, Cherry.
So any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. With that, we'll go ahead and do, um, number ten, summary of current events. Just a quick one. I, um, attended my first meeting today from the NACOG's Community Action Board. So, um, they've got some good programs. I will keep you guys informed of any programs that would affect Holbrook moving forward. So, and that is all I have. Vice Mayor Nelson.
And I'm going to, I'm gonna call into the NACOG meeting tomorrow at ten o'clock. The committee on.
Perfect, thank you. All right, anything else? Councilwoman Black?
I don't have anything.
Councilwoman Church? Councilwoman Tafoya? Councilwoman Tack? Councilwoman Pacheco? I think everybody's tired, so. All right, Tori, city manager report. You can be a speed reader as well. Just kidding.
Um, I'll just be brief. You have it in front of you, just for the public. Had, um, meetings with P and Z Civic Press with the website, NACOG, general information on grants. Uh, WIFA grant opportunities, Local First grant opportunities. I had a Holbrook Listens Community Meeting of this month. I'd like to do that on a quarterly basis. Worked with department heads. I double-checked and I did have meetings with every single department head on their budgets. So Randy and I just need to get together to put that together so we can move forward with you. And then I'd just like, um, two recognitions, DV in safety. I wanna take a moment to recognize DV for his exceptional dedication and leadership in both the safety department and as interim streets department supervisor. His commitment to improving workplace safety, streamlining operations and fostering teamwork has made a significant impact on our city departments. He additionally stepped up as interim role for street supervisor, taking on additional responsibilities. Um, so I thank him for that. And then Ryan Baldonado. Um, I want to extend a huge thank you for him for his outstanding job he did in cleaning the ditch at the west end of the city. The water's going down. Um, it's actually flowing out towards the, uh, the wash. Um, tackling a project like this takes effort, attention to detail, and he did an outstanding job.
All right, thank you very much. So, all right. With that, I'd like to open the floor for a motion to go into an executive session. And at that point, thank you for being here, but, sorry, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to move to executive session.
Have a motion. In a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll go into the executive session. Are we having an attorney? So, probably not.
No, we got a board.
I know. So is the attorney joining us tonight?
Yes.
All right, I'm gonna run to the bathroom real fast, cause I drink all of mine.